All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
No.
Here.
Councilmember Coetler.
Here.
Councilmember Koreshi.
Here.
Councilmember Seaman.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
All right, thank you, everyone. Welcome this evening. Before we get to our public comments on our first voting item and get to Honoring the Attorney on her Retirement as City Attorney, I just want to go over the agenda this evening. We had two changes. Two things got pulled from the consent agenda, so we will be discussing the single-reading ordinance authorizing the purchase of decorative streetlight fixtures and the ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for services to perform the annual audit is actually needs to be a two-reading ordinance. So that has been both pulled from the consent agenda. Otherwise, our agenda for this evening is the same. Moving forward, on Monday, June 19th, as we've been talking about, we have set a number of additional meetings as we try to look forward to hiring a new police chief. And so one of these meetings begins on Monday night at June 19th. It will be in the Azalea Room at 7:30. The goals for that night will be to discuss goals overall for our police department, the role of the community in this process, the process for police recruitment, and next steps in hiring a police chief. Last week, we had a very good conversation with our three captains who are working together right now in our police department. And if you didn't have the chance to see that, I encourage you to go back and watch the recording from last week's discussion. Then our next meeting will be back here. Oh, no, actually, it is Wednesday, June 21st, and we're going on the road again. We are holding our meeting at the New Hampshire Rec Center. So on June 21st, please do not come here. Go to the New Hampshire Rec Center. We will be celebrating and recognizing Immigrant Heritage Month. June is Immigrant Heritage Month. And so please join us at 7:00 PM for a reception. And that evening, we'll have a proclamation recognizing June as Immigrant Heritage Month. We have a public hearing that night on the qualities and characteristics of a police chief. Our voting session will then be the second reading ordinance authorizing bond issuance under Maryland Local Government Infrastructure Program to finance library and community center renovations and roadway streetscape improvements. We also have the second reading ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for services to perform the annual audit of the city's financial statements. We have a single reading ordinance approving the FY 2018 Community Grants Awards and Resolutions providing for appointments to committees. Our work sessions on June 21st is an update from the Executive Director of the Tacoma-Langley Crossroads Development Authority, an update from the Executive Director of the Old Town Business Association, and a presentation of the development partner proposals for the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center. Those proposals are already up on the website if people want to take a look at them. And then the City Council, many of the members of the City Council will be attending the Maryland Municipal League Summer Conference from Sunday, June 20th to Wednesday, June 28th. So we will not have a regular Wednesday night meeting on June 28th. On Thursday, June 29th, we will have another special meeting to talk about the hiring and the criteria for a police chief. Again, that will be in the Azalea Room at 7:30 PM. In addition to that, as we are looking at hiring a police chief, there will be a community survey that will go out that people can take part in. And then we're into July. The week of 4th of July, we will not have a regular council meeting. We will come back together then on Wednesday, July 12th. Our meeting will be here. Our voting session is a single reading ordinance awarding contract for services for food pantry program. Our work sessions that evening is the discussion of proposed amendment to the city code for operating of wheelchairs and bicycles on sidewalks, a payment in lieu of taxes for MHP and Victory Housing, a discussion of development partner proposals for the Tacoma Park Recreation Center on New Hampshire Avenue, and a discussion of our Maryland Municipal League Legislative Action Requests. And I'm glad to say that Councilmember Smith is taking the lead on our requests this year. And so if anyone has any ideas before we meet on Wednesday, July 12th, please talk to Councilmember Smith. So that's our upcoming meetings. Now we will have public comments on voting items. Our first voting item this evening is a resolution recognizing our city attorney, Sue Silver, for her years of service as the city attorney. I would first like to recognize Kathleen Connor from Congressman Jamie Raskin's office. There she is. Kathleen, if you would to come to the podium?
Is it okay if I just, if I talk loud?
No, you have to use the mic or else the people at home can't hear you. Sorry.
So Congressman Jamie Raskin really wanted to be here tonight to congratulate you and had several other responsibilities. But I was explaining to Sue that Jamie personally did the wording for the citation he asked me to present. So on behalf of Congressman Raskin, I'd like to present you with a certificate of special congressional recognition in recognition of your extraordinary service as Tacoma Park City Attorney and your constant devotion to the public good, fairness, and equal rights for all. Congratulations.
Wonderful. Now, would anyone else like to speak regarding the resolution honoring Sue this evening? If anyone would like to come to the podium and say any other words?
Hello? Hi, my name is Linda Pearlman, and I've had the honor and privilege to work with Sue Silver for the past 29 years. When I first started working with Sue, the firm was called The Law Offices of Susan Silver. We were located at 7676 New Hampshire Avenue in the Tacoma-Langley Crossroads Professional Building. Later that same year, we moved to Old Town Tacoma at 7,000 Carroll Avenue. And about a year and a half, we moved about a block away to the Tacoma Business Center. Now Sue was about seven months pregnant with her son Avi when I started. Avi arrived early, only about a month after I began working for Sue and before I really knew what I was doing. Of course, Avi's now a high school science teacher and soon to be married to Sierra. And Danielle, Sue's daughter, was a cute little five-year-old. I remember Sue telling me that I needed to cover a COLTA hearing because she had a Newport baby. And I also remember asking, "What's COLTA?" And then frantically reading the city's rent stabilization landlord-tenant laws as well as some prior COLTA opinions so that at least I could appear like I knew what I was doing. Sue's mentored me for many years in the city of Tacoma Park legal work, from the mechanics of reviewing city documents for legal sufficiency to the drafting of ordinances and charter amendments. But just as important, she's tutored me and taught me about the history, politics, and policies that led to the city's reputation as the People's Republic of Tacoma Park, which I actually think is a compliment. I grew up in nearby Silver Spring. I've lived here most of my life. But I admit, I really didn't know much about Tacoma Park before I started working here. I knew it had started as an Adventist community, and I was vaguely aware of Sammy Abbott as a Tacoma Park advocate and mayor. But before I started work with Sue, the most recent action that I had associated with Tacoma Park was that it had apparently given out rat or mouse traps to residents. But those traps didn't kill the rodents, they were have-a-heart traps. And rather than killing the rodents, Tacoma Park was going to release the rodents somewhere in the countryside of
Relocate.
Frederick County, which
The White House.
Tacoma Park's brand of social activism and progressive politics fits well with Sue's civil rights background, her opposition to discrimination of any type, and her compassion for others. She taught me by example not to say, "You can't do this" to the council members, but to try and think outside the box and come up with some creative but legal ways to achieve what the city and the council wants to do. Sue's left her mark on probably every significant action during her 30-plus years as city attorney. This would include everything from declaring Tacoma Park a sanctuary city to allowing non-citizens to vote, to unifying the city into Montgomery County, to tree protection, to the city's ban on cigarette vending machines. I still think that decision was wrongly decided, and much, much more. I'm proud to be Sue's law partner for all these many years, and I'm even prouder to call her my friend. I'm sure I'll be relying on her to provide continuing advice and expertise even after she's retired. And fortunately for me, at least, although she is retiring as city attorney, she will continue with our law practice. And so thank you, Sue, for everything you've done for me.
I'm Ken Sigmund. I've been working with Sue for 16 years now. When I started, I was a new lawyer and a young man. And she's been a mentor to me professionally and also a role model for me personally. I think Sue's greatest asset is her integrity, which, believe it or not, is not a universal characteristic among attorneys. For clients, including Tacoma Park, her unwavering integrity provides several benefits. First, it strengthens her client's position because her opponents know, whether they're in negotiation or litigation, that the facts she presents are going to be accurate and her legal arguments are going to have merit. She also, because of her integrity, always guides her clients to the most efficient path to a good outcome. And this is not always the easiest or most profitable way to practice law, at least in the short term, but it always works out best for our clients. Her integrity has also given me the luxury of never feeling any pressure to do something that I don't believe is right. Another great asset of hers is her dedication to progressive ideals and her willingness to use the law to promote progress. Because Tacoma Park's residents and officials share her commitment to progress, during her 35-year tenure with the city, she's helped establish policy that's been on the forefront of a lot of social and environmental causes that will someday be adopted, or either have been or will be adopted by cities, counties, states throughout the nation. Some of the examples include recycling, immigration sanctuary, LGBT rights, and restrictions on the use of products that are harmful to people and the environment, like polystyrene food containers and lawn pesticides. One case that, and it's one of the first matters that I worked on with Sue for Tacoma Park, that's illustrative of the type of attorney she is, or the type of person she is, the type of city attorney she was, and also highlights another valuable characteristic of hers, which is creativity. It was the spring of 2001, and at the Crossroads Shopping Center, it had become kind of a de facto employment center for day laborers. There were so many people at the center looking for work that when a pickup truck pulled into the parking lot, they'd be swarmed by people. Customers were afraid to go shopping there. The property owner, the shopping center owner, and the businesses started to complain. The shopping center owner flew down from New York and was pushing the Tacoma Park Police Department to start arresting the day laborers for trespassing. So you've got day laborers on one side, and these are people with little money, usually are often undocumented, not able to speak English. And then on the other side, you've got established city businesses, a wealthy property owner. And while the day laborers were technically trespassing and the property owners were trying to enforce valid property rights, so you'd expect probably a swift enforcement action. Well, what ended up happening was Sue negotiated a deal. She recognized the valid concerns of the property owners, but she also recognized the harsh consequences to the day laborers, if any of them were to be arrested. And she recognized their need to find a way to make a living. So she brokered a binding agreement between the Tacoma-Langley Crossroads Development Association, the shopping center owner, the city, and CASA that allowed the day laborers to keep using the property for six weeks, you know, with certain rules set in a designated location, while CASA secured a new location for them to meet up with contractors. And this is a time when day laborers were a big problem throughout the country, and most jurisdictions were looking for ways that they could constitutionally crack down on them. So instead, we had a smooth transition for them to a new spot. And so a lot of people would say that's so Tacoma Park. I'd say that outcome was so Sue Silver. And so I'm proud to have worked for all these years. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Hank Prensky from Ward 5. I've known Susan for over 30 years, and I'm wearing a T-shirt entitled "One Tacoma" that was the culmination of a 20-year fight with, mostly with Prince George's County and Paris Glen Dunning, but to get the permission for the city of Tacoma Park to become unified in one county. I had a difficult time this afternoon picking out the T-shirt that I could wear to show my respect and regard for all of the matters that Sue Silver worked on. There's my Nuclear Free Zone T-shirt. The reason I ran for and was elected to the City Council in 1989 was as a member of the Nuclear Free Zone Committee, I didn't feel that the sitting council at that time was showing due respect and regard for the city's Nuclear Free Zone ordinance. Susan did show respect and regard, and through complicated machinations of the city refusing to buy Ford Crown Victorias for the police department, the city refusing to buy IBM computers, and not using General Electric light bulbs, all three corporations which were heavily involved in the production of nuclear weapons, we, the Mouse, roared and made statements of our conviction and our values, and survived as a city to do that. I could have worn the T-shirt from our Sister City program with Santa Marta in the province of Cabanas in El Salvador when I traveled there as a representative of the city of Tacoma Park in 1990 in the middle of a civil war, or in the middle of a war by the government of El Salvador, supported by the government of the United States against the people of El Salvador, and delivered material aid to help the people of Santa Marta survive in a hostile environment in their own country. In 1991, Beverly Habada, the former city manager here will remember, we wrote and passed unanimously the strongest anti-smoking law in the eastern half of the United States. It did such outrageous, ridiculous, and radical things as prohibiting the placement of cigarette vending machines in places where children could get to them. It outrageously prohibited smoking in daycare centers. And it outrageously prohibited the distribution of free samples on the streets of Tacoma Park. For this, we were tracked and harassed and stalked by the Tobacco Institute, the Vending Machine Owners Association of the State of Maryland, both organizations which spent in excess of $200,000 showing up at every work session, at every hearing, and at every vote, arguing against the city's taking this position to protect the health and safety of our own citizens. Susan was smart enough and prescient enough to know that bad things happen in the name of law. So when we were sued by the vending machine owners and the Tobacco Institute through the Circuit Court, through the, up to the Court of Appeals in the state of Maryland, she also helped us save the city's taxpayer money by assuring us that the Maryland Municipal League would take over the defense of the city because this was a big deal and could affect other municipalities in Maryland. So we didn't spend a penny of city money. And Susan wrote the law with a severability clause, which when the Court of Appeals said our law was invalid because of a preemption law that had previously been passed about 20 years earlier by the tobacco industry, saying that no municipality could ever legislate anything that related to cigarette vending machines if the state regulated and taxed them. So we had no rights to protect the citizens of our town, but we didn't lose our entire law. We were featured on the front page of USA Today with 1.2 million copies about our valiant effort to fight the tobacco industry. The work that created our sanctuary city, which we didn't know was going to be necessary beyond the 1990s, beyond the 2000s, and into the 23rd century of Trump, our sanctuary city law is now a model for other jurisdictions, other towns, other counties, and entire states who will fight for the rights of their neighbors to live in peace in their own communities. Additionally, when Jamie Raskin, who was simply a local guy who worked at a law school, proposed the possibility of non-citizen voting in the city of Tacoma Park, we took on what was then called the Share the Vote campaign with legal justification, with historic examples throughout the western states and local jurisdictions in Somerset and Chevy Chase. And we became one of the first jurisdictions to be able to share the vote with our friends and neighbors who lived here and just didn't happen to be citizens of the United States, but were interested enough to be part of the community, to worry about their trash collection in the roads, to worry about what rules we would live by and their children would too. So I have a collection of T-shirts from all these causes, and this was the most uniform, overarching one I could pick. But Susan has also been my friend, and she has, she helped me write my will. She helped me, with Linda Pearlman's help, write an agreement for when my girlfriend and I bought a house together. We had a co-ownership agreement. And then when I married that girlfriend, we now have a post-nuptial agreement because it's important to define terms and to protect yourself for the future, all of which Susan advocates for and represents in a warm, powerful, humane, loving, and highly intelligent way. I am proud that she's my friend, I'm proud that she's been my colleague. And when thinking about what could sum it all up, Susan was the legal basis for Tacoma Park to be able to say for these last 30 years, "Yes, we can." Thank you.
I might get a hug out of that.
I'm Kathy Porter. I had the honor of serving on that council that you all are sitting on for seven years and as mayor for 10. So I had a lot of opportunity to get to know Sue very well and the many contributions she made to the city. And as I was thinking about what I wanted to say, I realized that a lot of people don't know what a city attorney really does, all the ins and outs of what a city attorney really does. They probably don't know that when you all retire to these closed sessions with the city attorney, what really goes on there. I mean, there's a lot of discussion of legal issues, there's a lot of discussion of, you know, precedents and legally how we would construct things. But there's also somewhat of a back and forth. Many times when I was sitting in those meetings, I remember the council would want to do something that maybe wasn't totally clear that we could do, or we wanted to take a certain tack in a court case that maybe wasn't going to have such a good outcome. And I have to give Sue enormous credit, that she always told us straight up exactly what she thought. And she didn't sort of couch it in such a way that it was less offensive. She really told us what she thought. And I remember a number of times when we argued with her, we said, "But wait a minute, you know, this isn't right." I remember arguing with her myself, saying, "One of the things that Sue said to me that I have forever remembered is I said, 'But Sue, that's not fair, that's not just.'" And Sue said to me, "There's justice, and then there's the law," which is something I always remember when I see some court case resolved in a way that absolutely is inexplicable to me. But she, and I can remember a couple of times that she said to us, "Well, you know, I will give that my all, but I told you what I thought." And, you know, she was right, we lost on both of those cases. Sometimes you want to go in there knowing you're going to lose and do it anyway. But but it's always good to know that that's where you're going for. The other thing, and people have mentioned Sue's contribution to many of the policies of Tacoma Park. I always found Sue's input into those policy discussions particularly valuable, because she has lived in Tacoma Park for such a long time, she's been the city attorney for such a long time, that she knows the backstory to just about everything. She knows the background, she knows if we maybe tried that ten years ago and it didn't work, but then the laws changed since then. She knows, you know, sometimes we've had very intense discussions about policy issues in this room with people throwing around, "Oh, that's illegal, you can't do that," "Yes, you can." And whenever we had one of those discussions, we always made sure that Sue was in the room, was in the audience. And inevitably, I remember, we would call her up, we'd say, "Okay, Sue, all these issues have been raised, what do you have to say?" And she always, because she's not only so knowledgeable, but she's so well-respected, that if she said, "Okay, this is, you know, I've researched this and this is what I found out," people listened to her. And we wouldn't have people just throwing around, "Well, this is the legal aspect," "No, it's not, something else is." And so she really helped us with our policy discussions come to a point where we could come up with something that made sense in terms of the City of Tacoma Park, what we wanted to do. And she was also very creative, people have mentioned this, in pushing things forward. There were times when we wanted to do things that really hadn't been done. Hank mentioned a couple of those in his remarks. But Sue, with her creativity, managed to keep us within the parameters of the law, but still moving forward in the direction that we wanted to go. And I give her enormous credit for that. There's also a couple of, the other, one of the things I'm sure people don't think about when they think about what the city attorney does, attorneys these days are sort of like physicians. You have your general practitioner who knows everything about you, all your, your health history and everything. Then you have your specialists. And one of the most important things that a city attorney can do is they can tell you when you need to bring in a specialist and find one for you. Sue was very good at telling us when we had gone to the point where we needed someone specialized advice. And also very good, she has a wonderful network, wonderful contacts, telling us how to find somebody, it was really good. Remember one, I don't want to get into the details of this too much, but I remember one situation where we were negotiating something that was a very technical issue. And she said, "Oh, I think you need to, we need to bring in a technical specialist here." We said, "Oh, Sue, you know, this is, this seems on the surface pretty straightforward, we don't need a technical expert." She said, "No, I think you do." So she found us this technical expert. We found out how much she was being paid for hours, we were like, "Oh, my God. You know, this is an enormous amount of money, do we really need this guy?" She said, "I think you do." It turned out that there was some regulation that had just changed, some part, subpart of a subpart of a subpart of some regulation that had just been changed the last week, that nobody knew about, but this guy knew about. And it ended up, in our negotiations about this particular agreement, it ended up saving us an enormous, enormous amount of money, because this expert who knew this little tiny detail. And as a matter of fact, it saved us so much money, it saved us more than we even paid this very expensive specialized attorney. And so I give, I have to give Sue credit. A lot of what Tacoma Park and the council has done over the past thirty-some years has been due to her, not only her legal advice, but her really helpful and thoughtful and wise way of dealing with those of us who were the policymakers and the decision-makers, and really enabling us to do the very best job that we could in all of the kinds of things that we do to serve the City of Tacoma Park. So Sue, I want to very much thank you. Personally, thank you and thank you from the perspective of somebody who was on the council for so many years. Thank you very much.
Love it, love it.
There's a button. You can raise and lower the podium. My name is Bruce Williams. And as I think most of you know, I sat up there for 22 years, the last eight as mayor. And I got to work with Sue over that whole time and even before, because when I first got involved in city politics, there were a number of issues that I was involved in. And I think that the one that is most important to me that Sue was integral on was, before I was on the council, I was Chair of the Task Force on Family Diversity. And this was looking at all of the ways in which family is defined in the city code and making sure that it was inclusive. And that was, that was part of what Sue felt was really important to do in defining things so that LGBTQ families were recognized and valued in the city. And what it led to was an establishment of a domestic partnership registry and extension of city benefits to partners, domestic partners. And one of the difficulties with that was the city then, as I believe still now, gets insurance through the local government insurance trust, Legit. And Legit said, "Well, we can't do that just for you, we would have to do it for all of our insured members." And so Sue led the effort to make sure that not only could Tacoma Park offer health insurance to domestic partners, but all municipalities in the state of Maryland, including the City of Baltimore, could do that. And so that extended that, that was like 1991. And that was pretty far advanced for what cities could do and what LGBTQ issues were dealing with at that time. And so I always appreciated having that opportunity to work closely with Sue to help make that happen. And in my long time on the city council, especially my time as mayor, I got to work with Sue on so many issues and so many of the things that previous speakers talked about, I associate myself with their comments. And I think the one thing that I'd like to add is the recognition that Sue was always somebody who you wanted there when there was a tough issue that you were going to be talking about, because you knew that Sue was very quick on her feet. She could think about what an issue was, how to, how to frame it, how to talk about it. And as with the issue with the day laborers, she could diffuse something and bring parties together where you thought that they were going to be far apart and never be able to get together. And so she has a great ability to do that and to think in that way on so many issues. And I always knew that she was hard at work in other places like Equality Maryland and similar organizations on a state and national level, working for equality for everyone. And we really appreciate everything that she's done. And I do want to say that Sue, as you step back from being city attorney, it's okay. You can have a little more time with yourself, with June. You can do things, you can travel. You can keep doing the things that you like to do, you can keep having private clients, but it's okay. So, welcome to semi-retirement.
So I have the privilege of having grown up in a Sue Silver Tacoma Park, being that she is my mother. And I will be honest that initially, growing up, I was a little resentful of these city council meetings, which used to be on Monday nights, because it meant was special sessions that my mom would not come home until very late. But growing up, in hindsight, I realized it's because of those special sessions that I was able to grow up in not only the People's Republic of Tacoma Park, but what I now understand to be an oasis in America, almost a utopian community and a community that so many other cities, not only across this country, but I've since learned across this world aspire to be like. So just to paint a picture of what growing up in a community like this meant for me, it meant that there were trees everywhere, that I could find a park in almost every direction that you turn, which I've since learned is not a regular occurrence in anywhere else in the world. It meant that I grew up with peers in school who were refugees from Ethiopia or from Zaire, which is now the Democratic Republic of Congo, or from El Salvador, as Hank mentioned. It meant that my peers were able to come out as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, when previous, you know, in other parts of the country, people were still being persecuted and still today are being persecuted for their sexual orientation and their gender identity. All of these things made me really interested and compelled to pursue a career and a lifetime pursuit in social justice. And I was encouraged by my mother and by other lawyers that I should go into law. And I thought, you know, but I've learned that the law is not self-actualizing. And so you have city council members and you have city activists who are doing all this incredible work to push places like Tacoma Park to be a beacon for freedom, a beacon for civil liberties. I don't need to be a lawyer, I just need to be an activist and I need to pursue social justice. And that, you know, went well to a degree, until January 20th of this year, where I think we started to learn that maybe the law is not self-actualizing, but me personally started to see more and more deeply that if we don't have the law, if we don't change the law, if we don't make sure that the law is protecting all of the liberties, all of the values that we hold dear, that we can erode, the society can erode back from all of the things that we hold dear very, very rapidly. So I just want to say with immense gratitude, first and foremost, to everyone on this council, everyone in this room who has been incredible leaders within Tacoma Park and has created a community in which I'm proud to have come from and will continue to try and build more communities like this. But I also just want to express my deep, deep gratitude to my mother, Susan Silver, who continues to be my hero, continues to be a leader that I will always look to, to think about how to do the right thing, what is the right thing, and how to make this world a country, a place that we all want to be a part of. So, thank you.
Great, well, thank you all for your words. Oh, good, sorry, no. You can't be outdone by the sister.
It's not so much, much can't be outdone, certainly I cannot outdo, which is why I hesitated. I was, I was planning to say something, but I wasn't. Needless to say, absolutely, I, yes, okay. So, wow, this is so cool, I can, okay. That's all, okay, it's got buttons. As you can see, I've benefited a lot, no, it has to go up. Over the years, I've benefited a lot from, from living, I don't want to say under the shadow, because it certainly was not a shadow, it was much more of a illumination of my mother's, oh, I'm a son of that woman, of, of, living underneath her breath.
Aura.
Aura, I like that, aura, sorry, microphone. Underneath her aura really was, was quite wonderful. I got to go to these cool parades, I got to eat the amazing pizza of Taliano's and later Pizza Movers 2. Rest in peace. Piece of pizza. But the bottom line is, I have been so proud, like Danielle was saying, to have grown up at Tacoma Park. But the weird thing is, is, and I said this to you before, it was the weirdest thing to me. As a kid, I, like Danielle, was kind of like, "Where does she go on Mondays? What's going on, when's she coming home? Why can't she bring home pizza tonight? What's going..." And, and she was always so calm and so stoic and so humble, I guess, that I always, I always tried to walk all over her as a kid. And so it was really weird to me when we'd be in public and people would come up to us and be like, "Your mom has changed my life," and be like, "What did she do?" And, but, but since then, she's actually legally, not that I did anything really wrong, it was just some tenant situations when I was a tenant somewhere. But I was, I, I, one of my passions in life and one of the things that led me to teaching is I really liked seeing people in their element and doing what they were really, really passionate, really, really comfortable doing. And much like watching my sister give speeches, the, watching my mom negotiate and make sure that everyone is being represented and heard and, and have their, and, and being fairly treated legally and otherwise was, was really cool to watch that one specific day in our kitchen. And so, yeah, I had to say something.
Great, wonderful. So now we're going to move on to public comments on, and just bear with me for a little bit while we take care of some business and then we'll present the resolution. So we have two other voting items. The one is a single reading ordinance authorizing purchase of decorative streetlight fixtures. And I know there was at least one resident who wanted to speak to this. And now we're going to go back to using the clock, so, the timer. And I think, Mr. Sherman, you asked for additional time, so he said five minutes?
Yes, thank you. It's great to know about the button. My name is Mark Sherman, I live on Hancock Avenue in Ward Three. Since 2015, I've been trying to work with the Department of Public Works to ensure that any LED conversions meet the public health needs that have been identified by people all over the country and all over the world in relation to these lights, which are sometimes too bright and which are sometimes too high on the color spectrum, too close to the blue end of the spectrum. Lighting is a public health issue and it's also an aesthetic issue. And I have long been concerned that whatever we did with the overhead streetlights, which the council considered last year, that we might at some point lose the decorative streetlights, the historic shorter streetlights in the Old Town section, which to me are such a special part of what we do. I created a little, really little slideshow about this. Is it possible to load that? I don't know. If so, I can use that, if not, I'll just speak contempor, extemporaneously. In what you just heard about the City of Tacoma Park, and I'm so glad I came tonight to learn more about the history of my own city, Tacoma Park is often being held up as a model for other municipalities. But it's also incumbent upon Tacoma Park to listen to expertise elsewhere and not assume that we have all the expertise in our own hands. And so what concerns me most about what's been proposed is that the configuration put forward by the Department of Public Works writing on a contract to Aaron, created by Edmondale County, is not something that the International Dark Sky Association thinks would be a good idea. I shared with their technical director, Pete Strasser, what the city has proposed. And Mr. Strasser was quite forthright in saying that what was proposed is not something that that association would ever approve. Here's my little slideshow. You can go to the next slide, thank you. So in addition to the, what a light looks like during the daytime, and here we have a nice shot of the light by the farmer's market, you can go to the next slide. There's one by the hardware store. It's also the type of light inside and the way that that light is shielded, you can go to the next slide, thank you. The old lights have a yellow hue and it's partly the casing, that translucent covering that you see there. And it's also the type of light that's inside, you can go to the next slide. This is the sample light that was installed, I learned yesterday morning, on Columbia Avenue to the side of the Long and Foster Building at One Pine Avenue. And you can, if you look carefully, you'll see the streetlights that are green in the background, but then below the streetlights you see two little yellow things. Those are two of the existing old-style lamps. And the thing in the foreground is the new thing. I took that with an iPhone camera, but the camera doesn't really do justice to the distinction in the type of lights we're looking at. You can go to the next slide. That's a shot during the daytime. The thing about this sample light is that there was no notice to the public that this, this was a sample light. There was no way for anybody to say, "Oh, jeez, I'm going to come check that out" and weigh the merits of the proposal of putting that same light fixture in the rest of the Old Town area. You can go to the next slide. And in contrast, this is one of the older lamps, which doesn't overwhelm the camera or the human eye. You can go to the next slide. There's also the issue of There's also the issue of context. We've had a growing number of lights on the sides of buildings. This is the Bank of America, they got five lights just on that one side of the building. And that's the end of my slideshow, you can close it. I didn't have the opportunity to do more. The fact that I only learned about this yesterday morning, I think is a sign that the process for public input has been inadequate on this issue. And I'd be happy to share with the council the very detailed comments by Pete Strasser of the International Dark Sky Associations. When I shared those comments with the director of Public Works, she said she preferred to follow the city's own expert, who is an account executive with the company that is selling us the lights. Now, I expect salespeople to know something about their products, but they're not a disinterested party. And so I urge the council to vote no, something that's difficult to do, to vote no tonight, because we have not had the benefit of the input of the organization that is head and shoulders, the most expert organization on what type of lights cities should consider when making these type of installations. Please don't make a decision tonight that would forever alter the character of our Old Town district. Thank you very much.
Love it.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this voting item this evening? All right, our next voting item is the first reading ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for services to perform the annual audit of the city's financial statements. Any public comments on that this evening? No, then we'll go to general public comments. If there are other, Mr. Lovess will get you the microphone. First, Mr. Edgell, why don't you go first and...
Madam Mayor, council members, I'm Joe Edgell. I live at the corner of Elm and Larch Avenue. I'd like to show you a little picture here, hopefully you can see it. This gentleman here is Frank Towers. Not sure if you read the article in the Washington Post, but Frank Towers was killed crossing a crosswalk in Montgomery County. It's happened a while ago. There's just an article on it. He was riding his bike across the street in a crosswalk, thinking that was the safest thing to do, and car ran him down, killed him. And the driver was not liable for that, because he was in a crosswalk, he was riding his bike. So, you know, when you hear this, first, sure, you were probably appalled at this. Well, the county changed the law, and the county changed the law to make cyclists riding in the crosswalk protected. I'm sure when you hear that, you're probably relieved, but I hope you're not too relieved, and here's why. Anybody riding their bike in a crosswalk, under the new law, which takes effect in October, who gets hit in Tacoma Park, that driver is not liable. That driver can run somebody down and kill them, much like Frank Towers in Tacoma Park, under the new state law, and it's okay. So you ask yourself, why? Because Tacoma Park prohibits riding on sidewalks. And the law specifically says that you are only protected riding in a crosswalk, which seems like the safe thing to do in jurisdictions that allow riding on sidewalks. So while the Safe Roadways Committee has come to you in the past and told you a bunch of reasons why it's better, it's not perfect, but it's better, I think we now have a very compelling reason, and that's the death of people like Frank Towers. People shouldn't have to die when they ride their bikes in a crosswalk. People should feel safe in that crosswalk, whether they're on two wheels or on two feet. Segway riders are protected, but not bicyclists. So when you consider this, the next time you consider it, I'd like you to think about Frank Towers. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Lovess.
Okay, this is Pat Lovess, your official peace delegate.
7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park. I'd like to ask people out there to be aware of what's been going on now with the, on the TV sessions and them, and now we've got to realize that's a product of people who don't vote, people who think it's okay, but it's why we've got to get the vote out and do it responsibly. Also, my friend Candace won't be able to bring me into the meetings for quite some time now because she's having a hip operation, and she's going in Tuesday for the operation. And I want to wish her a lot of luck, and I thank her very much for what she's done for me. And also, we're having demonstrations coming up soon. We're having the Starving for Justice on June 29th to the, to the 2nd down in front of Supreme Court. Those four days, they're having something called Fasting, Fasting for Justice. And I'd like to know if anybody wants to go down to that, because I'm planning on going down to at least one of those nights, and I'd like to get many other people involved too, because we did away with the death penalty, now we've got to teach other states how to do away with it too. And also, I'd like to thank my nurses aides for what they've done for me, like Doris Thompson, she did my hair up for me tonight. And Keisha, she does a lot of stuff for me too, Keisha Johnson, she does a lot of stuff for me too, and without those two, I wouldn't be here tonight. I don't even think I'd be here. And I'd also like to ask people out there, if they know anybody that can help me get to meetings and to events, please help out. That's one way you can work for peace, is help your elderly and disabled get out to meetings, because I'm sure there's a lot of them out there who would enjoy coming down to something like this. So if you can, if you know it, please help us out. Please help us out, and I'll see you on the 4th of July in the parade. I'll be carrying the peace sign, carrying it for everybody, and I'd like to see other people starting to come down to my demonstrations and stuff, and starting to take part in the social world around them. Don't be a member of the D-GAS club. D-GAS stands for Don't Give a Shit. So please, please, don't be a member of that club. You don't want to have to look your child in the eye and say, "Oops, I didn't do what I should have done." The kid's going to ask you, "What did you do to make this world better?" And my dad says, "I didn't do, I didn't do anything," and the kid's going to cry when his world is gone. So we've got an environment to make peace with also, because Trump had recently done away with the Paris Accords on the environment, so think about it. Okay, love it, love it, love it.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening? All right, we'll move on to council comments. All right, no council comments this evening?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you. First of all, I would just like to...
We're going to do that during the resolution.
Okay. Second of all...
Yeah.
I've got, I've got a number of items that have been brought to my attention by people in Ward 4, and I'd just like to run down this list real quick, if I could, from Mr. Dan Weber. Number one is, there's a feeling that it's really good when you have a plumber as a father, because then you can have your plumbing problems taken care of. And so it's nice that we have pothole fixtures in the city so that we could maybe fix the potholes in the library parking lot. They seem to be growing in number. And people are concerned about the tripping hazard there. The other tripping hazards that they've mentioned is one that I brought to your attention some time ago, but there's still concern. It's where a power line was down on Ritchie Avenue. It damaged the sidewalk. I don't have the address right in front of me right now, but I think it's like 117 Ritchie Avenue. Again, it, it took out chunks of sidewalk, and Pepco has not fixed it, obviously isn't going to, since it's been several years since that happened. I know Public Works looked at it and said, "Well, it's not too bad," but people feel that it is. If it's, it's something, if it was on their property, they would be liable because of the tripping hazard, and they're concerned that this is on the sidewalk in front of their house. And then the other one is on further down Ritchie Avenue, actually beside 7620 Maple Avenue. As you start off a Maple Avenue going up the hill, there are a number of chunks of cement missing from the sidewalks. The resident manager there at that apartment building is concerned, because as you know, that's a primarily resident of, residents of senior citizens and disabled. The concern is, again, that it's a tripping hazard. I think they would be open to working with the city if, if the city wanted them to fix the sidewalks. A couple of years ago, they did that themselves, and I understand that the city objected to their having fixed them on their own, so they'd like to get the problem resolved. And then the last item that I wanted to call to your attention is, and again, I mentioned this some time ago, but I think we need to make a decision on it, and that is the new crosswalk across Maple Avenue at Ritchie Avenue. It was moved to the, I guess it's the north side of Ritchie Avenue. Anyways, there are parking spaces on the, between the driveway of 7611 Maple Avenue and the crosswalk, where either one or two cars can fit in there. But what happens is, when the cars park that close to the crosswalk, the pedestrians and the, and the drivers through that intersection have trouble seeing each other, and there have been some close encounters. People wonder if we couldn't have maybe no parking there right next to the, to the crosswalk. Again, I think we need to look at these things carefully and make decisions, get answers back. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Dan Weber, last week I asked you to consider keeping the stop signs at Flower and Maplewood once the Carroll Avenue Bridge was reopened. But I just learned this evening that the contractor has already removed those stop signs, so I would like to request an expedited review of having those stop signs put back at that intersection, and also the stop signs at Maple and Maplewood. These are also stop signs that are part of the, or were part of the Carroll Avenue Bridge closure.
Okay, and I'll speak to that during the City Manager's time.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. I do want to say that Jason Dan Weber's done a great job with a lot of things thrown at him in Suzanne Lethal's absence, so we appreciate that. And of course, now I'm going to ask you for a few things. If you could check, first of all, we had the Jazz Festival the other day, which was a great local event. I did hear from a couple of people that that impinged on church parking because of the street closures, and I don't know if there's a specific answer to that, or if the parking restrictions were wider than before, or whatever, but obviously we don't want to, since those festivals typically happen on Sunday, we just don't want to have that end up being a problem for people at the Presbyterian Church on Tulip, so if you could check on that. Second, I've begun to hear from lots and lots of people asking questions about the deer population, and I know in the scheme of all the other things that we're working on, some people might not think that's high, and I do have a friend who's a bowhunter. I don't think that's the exact solution, but the county is, the county is the primary actor on this, as I understand it, but maybe we could reach out to the county and see what they're recommending as a, I don't know if there's an equivalent of the mousetraps that were discussed earlier, but some way, some way of addressing that. And the third thing is, I know some cities have been doing this, and there's been a little bit of email traffic on it, but it'd be good to get a report, maybe from the Sustainability Office, on what we're doing to comply with the Paris Agreement in the wake of the decision by the President to not do that. And I think we're probably already doing it, but...
The Sustainability Manager's putting together a one-pager for us, and she did give us a paragraph that the, the Acting City Manager gave us last week, that's on the website.
I missed that, so I apologize. And then the last thing, which is not something for Jason Dan Weber to do, some people may be aware, and this is a very serious matter, actually, there, there have been some crime that's taken place recently along Tulip Avenue, in the area of the Tacoma Park Child Development Center, which is lodged in the complex that's, again, part of the Presbyterian Church. And in addition to the recent car break-ins, often at drop-off and pickup time, which is a, can be a stressful and confusing time anyway, there was more recently a violent robbery and assault, and I'm pleased that the police responded quickly and caught the perpetrators, but obviously there's a high level of concern about that now, and that went beyond, not that the earlier crimes were in any way acceptable, but that went well beyond that. And so there's a public meeting, in particular for people from the area, for the community, and parents and families that are part of the Child Development Center, and that will be on this coming Tuesday at 6:30, and it'll be taking place at Presbyterian Church. The precise spot in the church where it's happening, I don't have that yet, but I urge those who are interested to, to attend that. And I do, again, want to stress, the police responded really quickly and caught the people who are responsible for that, but I think it's important for the community to have an opportunity to get their questions answered, so, thank you.
Great, thank you. Acting City Manager comments?
Sure. To, thank you, Mayor, and to the point that Councilmember Smith made earlier, I wanted to announce officially that the Carroll Avenue Bridge is now open. We had one or two or three current or past council members do an unofficial ribbon cutting there this morning, which there are hilarious pictures of, I've been told. While there are crews still working in the area, while the bridge is open, there will still be crews working in the area to finish some things on the outside of the bridge, and they'll be doing cleanup. I anticipate that'll take several more weeks, just so you know why there are still people working there. The temporary traffic signals at Sligo Creek and Maple and at the Wau entrance were removed today. I have approved making the temporary stop signs at Maple and Maplewood permanent in response to a request from residents, which was also supported by Councilmember Smith at last week's meeting. Public Works staff is going to be evaluating the intersection of Flower and Maplewood in the context of the larger plans for the Green Street project that's going to be going on there. They'll be making a recommendation regarding installation of stop signs there. The existing plan does not include stop signs at that intersection, and I was communicating with the Public Works Director today about that, and we'll try to get that evaluation done as quickly as possible. Last Saturday, Boy Scouts went to 170 homes in the city to distribute literature and conduct property surveys upon, as requested by homeowners whom they were meeting with, on potential breeding places for mosquitoes, and they helped dump water and remediate areas that were clearly potential breeding grounds for mosquitoes. They used the Presbyterian Church at Maple and Tulip as their starting point, and were assisted by our own Ron Hardy, who's the Police Department's Emergency Preparedness Manager, who provided them with training and literature. We are going to be posting those handouts online in both English and Spanish on the city's website later this week, and we'll make sure you all know where to find those so you can point your constituents to them as appropriate. And I want to give kudos to two staff members in particular this week. One of our many library rock stars, Karen McPherson, was recently asked by the Washington Post to write an article on audiobooks for kids, and her article appeared in the online edition of the Post on June 8th and in the print edition this past Sunday. I've included a link to the article in the City Manager comments, and as someone who hopes to go on a road trip later this summer with a four-year-old, as well as an 11-month-old, I found the article very interesting, and I plan to get some audiobooks for the trip. Want to extend kudos also to Paula Lozowski of the Recreation Department for her work on implementing the city's first summer camp for seniors. It was overwhelmingly successful. It was a culinary camp that took place from June 5th to 9th. That involved hands-on educational activities designed to expand culinary skills and knowledge while also having fun. They did a series of things at the, the community center and took the recreation bus on field trips, I believe, every day. I was leaving the building one day when they were returning, and there were big smiles all around. I heard people saying to each other they couldn't wait till next year. Just to, finally, a quick hiring update. We're interviewing for the IT Manager position this week, and currently have openings for the Public Works Sanitation Driver and Equipment Operator, and still the HCD Planning Intern as well. We hope to begin advertising for the new police chief sometime in early July. And that's it for the City Manager comments.
Paul? Thank you. All right, we'll move on now to the resolution recognizing Sue Silver for her years of service as the... We'll move on now to the resolution recognizing Sue Silver for her years of service as the City Attorney. I'd like to read the resolution and then ask for council comments. Whereas Sue Silver was the first appointed as Tacoma Park City Attorney in 1981, and whereas her service, her years of service to the city spanned six city managers, from Jim Wilson to Suzanne Ludlow, and six mayors, from Sammy Abbott to Kate Stewart. And whereas some of the work accomplished in the legal framework Sue helped design during her tenure include changes to voting laws to expand the franchise and stimulate civic engagement and representation, sanctuary city legislation to protect and welcome immigrants regardless of their legal status, landlord-tenant laws, COLTA, and rent stabilization to maintain affordable housing and ensure tenants' rights, and defense of equality for LGBTQ residents and family. And whereas, over the 35 years, the city has changed and developed. It became a nuclear-free zone, unified into Montgomery County, annexed Pinecrest, sought resolution to conflicts between the city and various institutions in the city or just outside it, protected Maryland Route 410 as a two-lane roadway through Tacoma Park, and prepared for the relocation of Washington Adventist Hospital. And whereas Sue started her law practice in Tacoma Park and raised her family here, she has been and will continue to be active and engaged member of the Tacoma Park community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, expresses its appreciation to Sue Silver for her 35 years of service as City Attorney. And furthermore, the City Council recognizes and honors the important contributions Sue has made to the city's progress and advancement of the Council's priority through her legal guidance. All right. Now I'll take council comments, and then we'll pass the resolution. Any comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. It's, it's surprising to me to think how long I've been on the council, and that Susan has been the City Attorney much longer than that. The, I remember many of the things that people talked about tonight, but I was also impressed with the list of issues that you worked on prior to my being councilmember. You know, I was going to talk about things, but I realized after hearing the talk tonight that the absolute best tribute to you was what your kids had to say. That, that is a testimony to your work, and I congratulate you on your, on your retirement, and thank you for your service and what you taught me.
Councilmember Mael?
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to thank Sue as well for, really, friendship in the six years I've been on council, five and a half years I've been in council. It's a pleasure to work with people who clearly enjoy their job, for the company, for the challenge of the work, the satisfaction of doing, you know, a good job. And also, somebody who so, I think, clearly appreciated, and you heard it in the comments that many of you made tonight, the opportunity that the, the city provided, but with Sue's help for creativity, so to really do new things, things that haven't been tried other places. One of the things that I got to work with Sue on was lowering the voting age to 16, which was a first in the country, and so, opportunity for creativity. So, I just wanted to say thank you. I also wanted to say thank you because I, I spent some time trying to delve into your history on the web and found old 2020 interviews with your family members, and great stories of, of your children's early days in the city growing up, and there are additional words about you, which I encourage people to, to look for and appreciate. So, thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. Sue, I would like to thank you for your leadership while you were City Attorney. You know, the first issue that we worked on together was the MOU for the East-West Highway. And one thing that really impressed me was not just that you understood the law, but how you navigated the community, because there was a community organization, Historic Tacoma, they had a different position, or what you thought was the best way to represent the city, and you were able to not just make sure that the city's legal rights were represented, but you were able to talk to their attorney and make sure that they understood that this was the best way forward. So, I really appreciate that you, you have the roots in Tacoma Park, that you can go and reach out to other leaders that are activists, be able to work with them. And one other thing that has stuck with me is, we had a meeting, and you told me about Isaiah Leggett's history, and how he came up through the county council and the issues that were important to him. And, you know, he's served in the county council for like, four terms, and, you know, this conversation we had, he was already county executive, but you remembered those equality issues that he was a leader on, and it made me understand that, you know, it takes courage sometimes to be a policymaker, and I should not shrink from that responsibility. So, I really appreciate you being a leader on these issues and giving me guidance where I, I wanted to understand how leaders in Montgomery County have been able to stay around for so long. So, thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
There isn't anything that I'm going to say that's going to be able to add to anything that's already been said. I'm just so impressed by the comments of your, of two of your employees, Linda and Ken, and your son and your daughter. I mean, those, that's something to cherish forever. And, and I guess the, the thing that I enjoyed most about tonight is that there was a lot of senior people in the room, in the Isaiah Room, and it made me feel very comfortable for an occasion. And I guess it just stems from the fact that there's so many people in the city that you have affected and befriended for so many years that they couldn't not be here tonight. And so, this was quite a public statement of their, of their affection for you. Thank you.
Councilmember Kova?
I want to offer my congratulations also, Sue. I'm one of the newer people here, and so I don't have the long history going back, so I can't cite numerous instances from the past the way others here can. I've had some interactions with Sue on Montgomery College and Washington Adventist Hospital, but, you know, last week, there was this staff appreciation lunch, and they honored people on staff here who had been here long periods of time. There's only one staffer who worked here who was there, honored anyway, longer than Sue. So, it struck me, all the amazing things that make the city unique and a wonderful place to live, that I try to talk about a lot when I'm up here, Sue's influence runs through all of that. And so, in a lot of ways, we have Sue to be thankful for, you know, a longer tenure than these other amazing mayors and, and people like Terry, who are all bragging about how long they've been here. And Sue's kind of been involved longer than all of them, so she's as much sort of the embodiment of what makes our city unique as anybody, so thank you.
Great, thank you. And I'll just add my thanks to everyone else's, and I think probably echo what Councilmember Siemens said. I think to have your family stand up and speak as eloquently and from the heart as they did really speaks to all of your accomplishments. We know the sacrifice that you have made over the years, the long nights, the hard work to make this such a wonderful community, and the fact that your children are not resentful, but proud, and here with you tonight is a testament to not just the wonderful work you've done, but what a wonderful person you are. And we're lucky to have you for so long as our City Attorney and here in the city, and we're glad you're here still. So, with that, Sue, I'd like to give you the, oh, actually, I have to ask people to vote on it, sorry, I almost got all, all right. Who would like to move the resolution? Councilmember Smith moved it, Councilmember Mael second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Awesome. All right, Sue, would you like to say anything?
Well, I don't have a gold watch, but we've been too long. So, I, so I don't have much to say. Thank you, Mayor. I, I will simply say this, that I'm so grateful, first of all, to the current City Council and the current city staff, in particular, the city clerk, Jesse, did a huge amount for tonight's event, and I can't be more appreciative. In addition, I want to thank everybody who came to, to the reception and to, to be here with me for this evening, because you come from all walks of my life. Many of you worked in our law firm, and it's amazing that we're still able to find each other, and maybe, we are, we are getting a little older, and at least we remember each other's names. My family, of course, you've seen my children, also, my son's fiancee, Sierra, is here with us tonight, and I can't say enough about my, well, I never know, speaking of names, partner, spouse, wife, June, has been incredibly helpful and wonderful throughout these, speaking of sacrifice, throughout the years as we, you know, do all the work that had to get done. I do want to correct the record in one very small way, and then I'm going to sit down, and that is, it sounds like I've been doing all this wonderful, politically correct, great work to build our community. Well, that's true, but we also do a lot of nuts-and-bolt stuff, and you heard, of course, that, for example, Councilmember Siemens, who's my councilmember, was concerned about potholes, and, believe me, the city lawyer has a lot to do about potholes and contracts and lots of very, you know, mundane, routine, important things. Probably that's 90% of what we do. And someone earlier said, what does the City Attorney do? Those are the things we mostly do. We support the institution, we support going forward to make sure that these things do work well. And in addition, in addition, we get to, I guess, have a vision of the community and help be the legal support that allows that beautiful vision to move forward. And to have the opportunity to have been doing that for everyone here for these 35 years is just amazing, and I thank you all.
Great. Now, you're all going to stay for the rest of the meeting, right? All right. All right. The next item, as people are leaving, will be our consent agenda. Would someone like to move the consent agenda? Councilmember Mael moved, Councilmember Schultz second. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye. Aye. Do we need, I think we might have to call a roll. We have a couple of single reading, yeah, let's call the roll.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Kova?
Yes.
Councilmember Mael?
Aye.
Councilmember Koreshi?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we'll take up the Single Reading Ordinance authorizing purchase of decorative streetlight fixtures. And we have the Director of Public Works here, and I believe there's some information in our blue folders from the Director as well.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to update you on this particular project. One of the things that's taken me by surprise is, and shouldn't, I guess, is, this is, this has been a long time coming. This isn't a new thing. It's not a, something that we took lightly either. For over 10 years now, the city's been upgrading its decorative streetlights throughout the Old Town and Tacoma Junction. I don't know if any of you can recall, we're doing a lot of looking back at history tonight, but we first started this three-phase project in the Tacoma Junction. Now, if you can recall, Tacoma Junction used to have 18-foot-tall streetlights with double lights posts on them that were quite old, and in fact, one fell over when someone leaned on it once. So, the priority number one in the first phase of that project was to relamp the streetlights in the Tacoma Junction area. There's about 22 decorative streetlights that were put in there. And in conjunction with our planning office, as well as Old Town Business Association, as well as the Historic Preservation Commission, which all this was discussed and approved and reviewed through, the decision was made to have continuity between Old Town and the Junction in terms of the decorative streetlights, and to provide that ambiance and that essential additional, what we call pedestrian-level lighting, not the overhead streetlights, but actually, the ambient light within footprint of people's pedestrian areas, the front of the commercial stores, and that wide expansive sidewalk that you come across. So, that project was undertook, as I mentioned, almost 10 years ago. The next phase of the project was when the City Planning Office embarked on that streetscape improvement in the 7100 block of Carroll Avenue, so we had nine decorative streetlights that were installed there. The selection of the streetlight type was always meant to emulate the Old Town lights, so, of course, as time goes by, we can't purchase those same types of lights anymore. And I think in the pictures you have presented from me and earlier emails to you, you should have that comparison, a picture of the Old Town streetlight, which is now gray, and, and the new streetlight. They're not identical, but they're emblematic, and they resemble each other to the closest degree. And in fact, that was a primary, primary interest of the Historic Preservation Commission when we brought this to them on several occasions during both the Tacoma Junction lighting change, as well as 7100 block of Carroll Avenue lighting change. So, those lights, as I mentioned, the 7100 block has about nine lights. We now, we requested funding in this current fiscal year, which is just about ending, and presented that during the budget discussions over a year ago about the, completing the third phase of the project of lighting upgrade, the Old Town area. And in those cases, what we are hoping to do is maintain the same light fixture, we're not changing the fixture type or the appearance to the degree that we can emulate it as close to what we had before, but we wanted to update and upgrade those. Any of you that were around when we were doing our initial greenhouse gas emissions inventory, we had an outdoor lighting study done, and at that point, the recommendation was made for us to move ahead into a new technology of induction lighting. So, all of our outdoor lighting that we've done since that time, and that's been 15-plus years, has all been induction-level lighting, and we've been very, very happy with induction-level lighting. The quality of the light is quite nice, and the longevity of the light, you know, we have lights that last 10 years or more, so it really helps with the maintenance issues. Unfortunately, induction lighting is becoming harder and harder to, to purchase. Part of the reason of that is that as technology improves and changes, and we've seen incredible change within the LED technology, that lighting technology is overwhelming and kind of has passed, passed by induction lighting. So, our lighting suppliers can still get induction lighting, and we still have to maintain and hope to maintain our previous 30-some lights in the Tacoma Junction area that are induction, but we feel like we need to make the shift going forward in this next last phase of the project to maintain the same fixture, but to move ahead with a new technology. And again, this wasn't done lightly. We've had lighting experts in the field with us looking at our light. That's who we purchase our lighting from. CN Robinson is a wonderful organization that provides lighting for us, and has been doing quite a bit of work with us in a number of ways, both interior work as well as exterior work and, and lighting improvements. These aren't folks that are just interested in selling us a product. Their, their, our success is their success, and they don't want us to purchase a product that would not work well. So, they've been onsite, they've done nighttime visits, they've had it, they've been in our meetings with Pepco, they've, they've participated with us as we move forward in this next level of lighting. So, when I, I say that I want to take my advice from the lighting experts that we've been working with, what I mean to say is I want to take my lighting advice from folks who have been there looking at the light, walking with us on the street, understanding the market and the availability of the lights in our area, and working with us in a partnership to get these lights installed. The other issue that you will see, if you look at that photo of the existing Old Town lights, is they're fairly decrepit. It is time for them to be updated. They aren't attractive. They were attractive in their day, and we certainly, as I mentioned, tried to emulate that style of fixture and that style of pole in the new lights we've installed, but they, they are yellowed, they are... They were attractive in their day, and we certainly, as I mentioned, tried to emulate that style of fixture and that style of pole in the new lights we've installed. But they, they are yellowed, they are broken, they are cracked. The fixtures need to get updated, and the poles need to be painted. So our program this evening and what we're trying to move forward is, again, as I mentioned, just the final phase of a lighting upgrade that we've been working on for over a decade. Let me see if there's anything that I hadn't gotten to yet. In terms of the lighting levels, we did have a sample light installed, again, all part of our process of making sure that we're getting what we want to get and that works in our neighborhood. That information about the sample light is on the cover sheet. That cover sheet was produced over two weeks ago, so that information has been available and certainly was not intended to be unknown or unshared. And I've certainly let folks know about that light. We all on a staff level have spent quite a bit of time looking at it, again, because we wanted to make sure that what we were proposing was something that we were comfortable with. So the fixtures that we're proposing to purchase this evening are identical to the ones in the junction and on the 7100 block. However, they will, they are recommended to have the LED lighting instead of the induction lighting. A couple other details just about the technology. I tried to include some information. There's been lots of discussion from our first streetlight, overhead streetlight conversations about Kelvin or color rendering and light temperatures. And I found it interesting to note that our initial decorative streetlights were incandescent, so they were a very nice white light. And our first energy upgrade 20-some years ago was to put in high-pressure sodium. And at that point in time, people loved the high-pressure sodium because they looked like gas lights. They were these nice yellow glow. So our, our old fixtures had these nice yellow lights in them, and it looked, you know, it looked like a gas light glow. And when we shifted to induction, which was a white light again and matched our early incandescent lights, there was again a little bit of shift and opinions as the color changed. And we went from that gas light look back again to the white light look. All this gets a little into the minutia and detail, but what I tried to provide in that information about color that I included there is a little bit of information about what the Kelvin scale is and how that ranges in terms of light color as you increase in Kelvin. What I've been told and what I've experienced myself is that most people, the human eye can't detect the difference between a 2700 Kelvin and a 3200 Kelvin. It's just not something that we're sensitive enough to see. You get into the 4000 Kelvin, 5000 Kelvin, that's very, very obvious and visible. So the lighting level distinctions that we're talking about here are ones that are really getting into the fine, fine detail that most people would not experience. When we had our streetlight discussion, we talked about making a limit of 3000 Kelvin based on the American Medical Association's recommendation about LED and lighting levels. There's still a lot of discussion and back and forth about that in the lighting technology industries, but I think that's a safe standard to stick with, and we're comfortable with the 3000 Kelvin. Our, our future LED lighting retrofits all have 3000 as the maximum Kelvin. The light fixtures that we're proposing to replace in Old Town were initially specified with a 3000 Kelvin. Since the questions have come up about this issue, we've gone back to the manufacturer or our supplier to have them ask the manufacturer whether we could get 2700 Kelvin, and we can, they can manufacture those. Our, our lighting is being made for us, it's not something off the shelf. So 3000 Kelvin is not common in outdoor lighting settings. More likely, it's 4000 and 5000. So they're making a special light for us. We can crank it down to 2700 if we like. In terms of the lens, the white glass versus the prismatic glass, that's just the way the lighting fixture is. There's not a whole lot we can do about that. The last piece of information I wanted to provide was some detail about the LED technology itself. It really is an entirely different type of lighting element than what we've had before. So LED is, is quite a different type of light, and it, it works differently in the fixtures. And I guess, lastly, if you haven't had a chance to see the sample light that we've had up, you know, I would encourage you to do so and, and provide any feedback you might have. Most folks can't tell the difference between the two lights on that corner as to which one's LED and which one's the induction. They're, they're pretty similar. One last point is, we did also order or make a request in our order that the lights be able to be dimmed. So in the event that the wattage level that we've chosen is seen in some areas of that section, and again, we're talking about Carroll Avenue from Willow to Columbia and the section of Laurel Avenue where there's a total of 30-some lights. We've already replaced four of those as they were crashed into or tipped over or box truck knocked them over. So there's 26 left of the gray-type lights with the white, white lens that hasn't been replaced.
Council, questions, comments? Councilmember Schultz?
Just to clarify, in your last couple sentences, you wanted us to look at the comparison, and you're talking about the one at the corner of Columbia and Pine.
And Carroll, Columbia and Carroll.
Columbia and Carroll.
Well, yeah, it's in between Pine and Carroll and Columbia.
And the one next to it is one of the older ones.
Yeah, the one in front of Law &amp; Foster is the LED, and the one in front of the blue house is induction.
Okay.
As are all the other ones in front of 7100.
Thanks. That's all I had to ask.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the lengthy presentation tonight.
Yeah, sorry.
You know, I, I look at the photo and the different lighting fixtures that you've proposed and, or what was there and what you're proposing, and, you know, I see nothing wrong there. It looks like an almost identical fixture. But I think the concern wasn't the, that we heard, the comments this evening wasn't about the fixture itself, but more about the light that's emitted from it. And I, I'm not an expert in lighting, and you've talked with someone who is. But as I hear the comment tonight, that there's a sub-organization that has raised serious concern about this type of lighting. And I think about the other lights that we're going to be planning to install, I think probably some on, changing some of the lighting on Flower Avenue or other places around the city. That, I wonder if it's time for this council to hear from the experts and see whether there's some things that we should know and be a little more knowledgeable about.
Sure. Well, it's an ever-changing technology, and so some of it's hard to keep up, which is why you need folks in the industry to be providing guidance. The one thing I will, will say is, we have been in touch with the Dark Sky Association extensively when we talked about the street lighting issue. So we're well-versed with those staff people. We're also working with the Department of Energy and the Outdoor Lighting Accelerator. So we have peers in other cities that we collaborate with and talk to. My main concern about the information that was recently presented from Pete Strasser at the Dark Sky Association is that he's never been here. He doesn't know the lights we're talking about. He doesn't know the area. He doesn't know what, what we're trying to light. Couple of the comments he made about, you know, decorative lights are just sort of decorative, they don't serve a function, and you should put 10-watt bulbs in them. Obviously, you haven't walked in our street to see that. We need lighting levels on the ground that's safe for people to be around at night, and it does much more than just a decorative light. So we need a wattage level of light that's sufficient to provide the adequate lighting. And we're also quite sensitive to the color issues. So, you know, I guess experts can disagree about things, but one of the things that I think we have to be very careful with is we want our experts to be working in here, you know. Walk Carroll Avenue and tell me what you think we should do with the decorative lights.
Right, I sure think that's fair. And just lastly, I'll say that, you know, having the notice about the sample light out there on the cover page for the council is a whole lot different than the public knowing about it. As you know, people don't sit there and just wait for those cover sheets to come out.
Sure.
So if we truly want public input on a sample like that, we need a better way of letting them know in a longer period of time for it to be available for them to look at.
Yeah. Well, I think I was just surprised by the interest because we've been talking about LED lighting for several years.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mayo?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Braithwaite, for the presentation. A couple of comments and questions. Last year, for my daughter's birthday, I bought her one of those programmable LED light bulbs that can change from blue to red to green to purple and back again, in like 300 different colors. And I guess I bring that up in sort of a lightweight, but the ability to change the tone of the light is something that LEDs, programmable LEDs now offer. You mentioned that, that the lights will be dimmable to some extent, so that sounds good. But I guess one of the things that, that I guess because of the number of replacements we've had to do because light poles get struck for various reasons, is the fixture, the fixture itself that the bulb sits in, whether that's a fixture that's likely has some chance of enduring more than two to three years so that we'll be able to get replacement light bulbs. And then the pole itself, so, you know, the cost of those poles, the durability of those poles, so that they're likely to survive their first strike from, you know, a mirror. Have you, can you add a little more detail on those issues?
Sure, sure. The, that fixture head, let's break it apart to the fixture and the pole. The fixture head is identical to the one we use for induction for LED, so it can have, it's the outside housing. We can have whatever lighting technology we want put inside it. So in the past, we've had an induction technology. What we're proposing for the future is an LED technology, but the housing and the size is identical. So if we were to tell our supplier, put an LED light fixture in that same housing, we could do that. And in fact, when we've gone from originally incandescent to high-pressure sodium, the first range, we're all done with the same fixture housings. So if we decided we wanted to change the light type, that's feasible. I don't have any idea what the cost is relative to the fixture itself, how much of it is the LED lighting, and how much is the, the outside fixture itself. For the particular last bit of lights that we're doing, these remaining 26, we're not going to change the pole. The pole is in good shape. We're actually just going to paint the pole. So there's been cases, you know, when a car hits the pole and we have to replace the pole. They, we don't tend to have mirror hits. We tend to have just full-on drunk driver plowing over the light. So no survival, no survival right there. Though we do had an uncanny number of the fixture tops being hit by box trucks turning. So the pole will remain, and it looks like the light's been decapitated. So the light fixture's gone, but the pole stands. So at any rate, with this last round, we're just going to paint the pole and put new fixture heads on them, and they are interoperable.
Okay. A couple more comments. I mentioned the ability to change color because it would be super cool to be able to have all the colors of the rainbow for, you know, Pride period or the Fourth of July colors, and that would be just sort of a neat, a neat thing.
Or gun violence awareness. It was very hard to find orange.
Yeah, orange, yep. And then the other comment is on the racial equity impact statement. I know we're, this is a work in progress, we're getting better at it. And I would just note, in a situation like this, when we talked about the Ethan Allen, New Hampshire intersection, the way we talked about it as being a project that had, the way we described the racial impact was we said, this is in Ward 6, which has a population of. And so I think, to be fair, when we look at things like this, this is a set of lights that is primarily in a ward with largely relatively well-off and more homogeneous racial mix, so we should describe that as well. One of my concerns with the racial equity analysis is that we, we would use it when it made things look good. And so I want to make sure we do that fairly, so I just wanted to point that out.
Councilmember Koreshi?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Ms. Braithwaite. I also am not a light expert, but I did happen to walk by the new fixture. And, you know, I hear Mr. Sherman's point, it doesn't, it doesn't have a different impact on me, but I might not be sensitive to that, or I might just be oblivious and have a thousand things going on in my head. But there was some communication this week, and I just do this for the benefit of the public that's watching and the public record. I know it's, I guess, in some ways, part of the public record, the communications with Mr. Sherman and yourself, but there was this discussion of 3000 Kelvin versus 2700. I think you did sort of discuss in one of your more recent communications in response that it is something that's, that may not be discernible to everyday citizens, but it's something that you would potentially look into. But I'm just trying to understand how we came to 3000 and what you think are the drawbacks of going down to 2700, if I may.
Yeah, the initial streetlight install, we did our LED, our main and first LED conversion, which was on Flower Avenue, and then our second one was on Ethan Allen Avenue. Those were 4000 Kelvin lights, and that was the recommendation from DOE and the Outdoor Lighting Accelerator folks that we were working with. Just about after we'd finished that project, the American Medical Association came out fairly strongly with a position piece and paper, raising concerns about circadian rhythms and light impacts and quality of LED lighting, and really cautioning against using the brighter, bluer color in the Kelvin scale. And their recommendation was, you know, when possible, to keep the Kelvin, the color rating at 3000 rather than going to something higher in number. So that 3000 number really was kind of kicked off by the American Medical Association and has been sort of become the, a level that's been discussed now in the industry. So there's still some dissent and disagreement about it in some circles, but given that there's been issues raised about lighting impacts and overlighting, and it's not just an individual one, you know, you see one light and it's going to mean you can't sleep at night. It's basically the collective increase of lighting in our everyday worlds and including in our tablets and phones and things like that. So that was really what kicked it off for us. And in fact, we were in the middle of streetlight conversations with the council. We hadn't, hadn't talked about the Kelvin level at all until the American Medical Association report came out, and then that's became a kind of a keystone piece of what we set as a, as our standard.
And the discussion that we had, I think it was last fall, on the wooden poles and the LED fixture, or lights there, is that similarly at that Kelvin level, or is it?
Yeah, that was what the council's direction was, that we would use 3000 Kelvin. And, you know, again, the initial installs we did were not at 3000 Kelvin, so everything in the future was, was directed to be 3000 Kelvin.
So to the other point, just playing devil's advocate about how these lights are sort of lower to the ground, they complement those wooden poles throughout the city. And using the example of Flower Avenue, I can't, this is completely anecdotal, it's just based on my own observation. Flower Avenue is a very different thoroughfare that's much darker as compared to the areas we're talking about here. So could it be argued that this, the fact that this is complementary lighting to existing wooden poles, that the impact would be greater in terms of the impact on everyday citizens and individuals and the impact of light on them?
Yeah. Well, on Flower Avenue, we don't yet have decorative lighting. We only have the overhead streetlight, lighting. The decorative lighting that we have is currently at about, the pole itself is nine feet and the fixture head is about almost four feet. So the light sits at about 12 feet or so. One of the pictures that I attached with, that you have there, your dais is a picture of a woman walking by our decorative light. So as you can see, it's, you know, a person comes in five foot, about halfway, you know, the rest of, you're about halfway point of the light pole, the rest of the light pole is, is on top of you. So it's not, it's way over your head when you're walking by it. Of course, as you're approaching something, it can, you know, you can see it at, at your eye-level gaze. But the, the main point there is that we've, you know, we don't think that the Kelvin is going to have an effect, the Kelvin level is going to have effect of lighting at that level. What you really start getting into is your wattage and your lumen level. How, how bright is the light in addition to what's the color of the light? So that's, again, what we rely on, folks that do lighting analysis for a living, to help us select what type of footprint we want the light to show on the ground as, what kind of foot candle or lumen level we want to have light at the ambient level, at, you know... know, where a person is. And so that was the selection that we have of a 65-watt LED light. Our induction light, not that it's comparable as an 85-watt, it's, you know, a higher wattage level, which is also an energy use level and doesn't really translate into lumen outputs. But again, we're getting way into the weeds here. But I think the critical issue for light impact is your light level, your foot candle and your lumen level in addition to the color. But those two things kind of integrate and work together.
Thank you. I'll go first.
Ms. Biddy, can I ask you, because this is in, our new budget begins July 1st, and I know this was in last year, the FY '17 budget. If we went ahead tonight, voted on this and passed this, when would you be purchasing the lights?
Well, it would be in your first budget amendment to roll funds into that. We wouldn't be able to get them before the end of this fiscal year. So I think last we knew, we were expecting a three-week manufacturer cycle, something along those lines.
And is it possible to get a sample of the 2,700?
Oh, sure.
So I guess, I'm trying to figure out the advantages and disadvantages of if we, say, council wanted to pass this tonight to let you move forward with the work, because I do think these streetlights need to, as you've pointed out, we need to move forward with repairing them. And then if we, since Mr. Sherman has brought this to the attention, OTBA is now aware of it, if people had more time to look at these two lights, if we were able to get the 2,700, I don't know, what's the proper term?
Kelvin, yeah, 2,700 Kelvin.
Kelvin. Before the final order was put in, is that possible? Does that mess up?
We can certainly find out. My guess is it would take the same three weeks to get the sample light. So then we just do an install and then we could revisit the issue when people had a chance to look at it.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. I want to say, first of all, I went over to the area last night, and I, this may be similar to what Councilmember Kareshi was saying. I think each person will probably have a different experience with that. I was over there, and I really couldn't tell between the various lights that were at that intersection. There's three or four around there, and you had told me which the specific one was. And so I saw that. It may just be that my eyes aren't sensitive enough to pick that up, but I didn't see a big difference. A couple of specific questions I had, and maybe you can just help me out here, and I appreciate the presentation. You mentioned that they can be adjusted, the ones we're talking about, but you said that's the wattage that gets adjusted, right? So, but you said wattage, of course, isn't the same as the lumens. But if you turn down the wattage enough, does that mean that the overall brightness of it, as we would think of that term, would go down?
Right, right. Kind of think of your own dining room light with the dimmers. You're not changing the color at all. If you dim it, it's still the same color, it's just reduced light level.
But who does that? Like a person walking by, can't just do that?
Yeah, no.
They all have to be done together, or is there someone back at Public Works who could say?
Yeah, we wish. No, these wouldn't be able to be digitally adjusted. It would be a switch within the light fixture itself. So each fixture, you'd go in, you'd open the housing, and you'd do whatever it is to change them.
So it's not something that you would do often, but if there was an install, and then people said, you know, it just seems a little too much, if there was an agreement, our staff could go around and adjust that, right?
Right.
I just want to make, okay.
Yeah, it's something that's assumed that you, you know, not something you would change a lot or do frequently, just if it was too bright, you would. And there's a limit to the dimmability. I don't know what it is. Usually it's about 25%. You could crank down to 25% of that.
So, and then just following up on what Councilmember Mael said, with what we're getting, can the colors change, or is that only something that?
No, no. I'll have to ask him. I don't know what the difference is and what's actually changing. Yeah, I just don't know.
Okay. So this is an area along Carroll and Laurel where you have both the conventional streetlights and these decorative lights. Are the conventional streetlights or the wooden pole lights, are they spaced the same distance as they are everywhere else?
Oh.
Because I think the question that was being asked by Councilmember Kareshi was whether, you know, do these make up for a wider thing, or is it actually just, it's a little brighter in that area because it's a commercial area, is it?
Yeah, it's a little brighter because it's a commercial area within some places, a fairly wide pedestrian, you know, 10-foot-wide sidewalks versus it's not just a four-foot-wide sidewalk. And it's a commercial area, so you have business components that are.
More activity and so on.
My guess is there's probably more overhead light in that area than there is on a residential street, certainly, because the residential streetlights are spaced pretty far apart.
So just two other things then. On this wooden pole question, and there's a comment in the OTBA article or letter about that. So it seemed to suggest that the earlier action only applied to wooden poles. Can you just clarify that point, if you wouldn't mind?
Yeah, I know when we had the discussion in front of council, we were specifically talking about overhead streetlights, the Pepco-related. I mean, the decision was that we're going to go with a Pepco conversion or our own purchase or a third party. So definitely the conversation was overhead streetlights on wooden poles that the city did not own. The only similarity is the Kelvin level, which is we were talking about light pollution.
But that was about our relationship with Pepco and whether we're going to own or lease or?
Yeah, and our plan to convert our overhead streetlights, meaning the high overhead streetlights.
Okay. It did strike me, and the mayor's comment about if it's going to take three weeks before this gets finalized, given the funding situation, and I am sensitive to the one, my eyes aren't sensitive to the difference in the light, but I am sensitive to the idea that maybe people in the community didn't know about that the sample is out there, and now they do, the sample's out there. If that gives us time to have people just see what it's like, and then we make our final decision in three weeks, or am I, is that what you were suggesting?
No, I was suggesting we vote on this tonight so that it doesn't get, because we're not, there's two weeks we're not, to give direction to the Public Works Department, but then to have it open to the public to comment on the, I'm going to use the wrong terms, the brightness, whatever they want to comment on regarding the sample. And then the Director of Public Works can come back to us and say, this is what we've heard, this is what we're seeing, and the recommendation for what to move forward with. And if other council members would like to, you know, talk to.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thanks.
Councilmember Smith, sorry.
Thank you. Ms. Raceway, have you had any complaints about the lighting on Flower Avenue?
No.
Okay. In Flower Avenue, we have switched out all of those bulbs to LEDs, correct? And what Kelvin are those bulbs?
They're 4,000 Kelvin.
4,000.
And they're at a higher lumen output, higher light level than these would be.
The idea when we first started talking about Flower Avenue and swapping these bulbs out to LED, Pepco promised us that they were going to give us this dashboard that we could control, I guess the illumination of the lights. Has that materialized, or is that just a?
Not yet, not yet. There's still.
Skunk works?
Yeah, well, we would never be able to control it, but it would be a controllable light. So Pepco, as the owner of the light, could be asked to adjust a light level in an area. The lights would also be able to self-report when they're out or when they're day-burning. So that's their primary interest, to be able to identify outage and day-burning issues without having to have a person, you know.
Report it.
Yeah.
If we go ahead and approve this request, and it's 26 fixtures, how many more do you anticipate having to replace?
That's it for the, we have a total of 61 lights between the junction and Old Town. So that path of along Laurel and Carroll Avenue is a total of 61 lights. So all of them have been converted except for 26.
Okay. All right. Well, I think those are my questions. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, I intend to support the resolution. I think we do need to pass it tonight. But I do have one question. Mr. Sherman's last slide showed a picture of the Bank of America building with five lights on the front of it. I understand that some businesses like to brighten up their facade so it glows in the night and looks like Paris along the Seine or something like that. But there's sometimes when those kind of lights get in, really invade people's bedrooms and other, the sanctity of their darkness. Is there anything, and that happens to be where I live, because the lights across New Hampshire Avenue on top of the, to come overlooked condominium, they're 120 feet up in the sky and they shine down like aliens landing from Mars. And I'm telling you, it's really kind of, it just, it lights up the interior of the house, our house, whether you like it or not. Is there anything that we can do or should do, or that is happening in other municipalities to encourage private property owners, you know, multifamily properties and commercial to take into consideration the impact of their lights?
Yeah. Some jurisdictions do have outdoor lighter regulations and light levels and criteria, even facade advisory board-type arrangements where you have to get approval. So it's one of those things that some jurisdictions have taken on very extensively. It's, again, kind of a determination about sort of what you want to regulate, how you want to regulate it, and how you're going to enforce. Again, in the original greenhouse gas inventory, we had a whole section on nightlight and some options discussed about trying to set standards for outdoor lighting at night.
That is something I would really be very interested in learning more about and trying to remedy. It may not be that there are a lot of situations like that in the city, but there might be, there might be some where it just gets to be kind of invasive, or in some cases, just overly lit, even in a commercial area, it could just get too much. And I hope that maybe we could focus on that in the future. Thank you.
Great, all right. No other comments? I'm going to suggest before I ask move to that we amend the resolution to add a whereas clause. This is whereas before a final decision on the Kelvin level to be ordered, the Director of Public Works will report back to the council regarding community feedback. Is that?
Sure.
All right. Would someone like to move the resolution as amended?
Councilmember Mael?
Councilmember Mael, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Schultz, second. Any other comments or questions? All right. It's a single reading ordinance, so we need a roll call.
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Mael?
Aye.
Councilmember Kareshi?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Aye. All right, thank you. And now we'll move on to our next item, which is, lost my agenda. Oh, we had to vote on, sorry, the other thing we pulled from the consent agenda is the first reading ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for services to perform the annual audit of the city's financial statements and prepare the comprehensive annual financial report. Councilmember Kovar will be recusing himself for this vote. Do we need any discussion, or does someone like to move? Councilmember Siemens moved. Do you have a second?
Second.
And Councilmember Kareshi, any questions or anything on this one?
Just explain why.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
So I'm recusing myself because the Coen Resnick is also the company that does my personal accounting.
Okay. This is a first reading ordinance, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? All right. Now we'll have the presentation and discussion of the community grant award recommendations, who have been waiting very patiently.
Good evening. My name's Gary Cardillo. I'm the chair of the Grants Committee. You've all received our recommendations at this point. I did want to preface what I was saying by thanking the council, also thanking Erin Kelly, our new staff member at the city. She's been instrumental in getting us through the process. We did have two deliberation meetings for this cycle. Typically, we have one, but we had a lot to go through, and so we took two meetings to do it. But we did it. We had 16 letters of intent submitted. We had 13, we invited 13 of those to submit, and we awarded, the total requested originally was $123,000. We eventually recommended to the council $75,000 of grants, which you had allocated to the program, and 10 organizations for that $75,000.
Great, thank you. One question I always like to ask is, were the guidelines and directions easier this year to?
Yes, I would say we are, we've made significant progress over the years to clarify, to make the process easier for all concerned, and it has become much easier. There were some things in the past that were unclear for applicants, but this year we've made it much more, much more streamlined, much more clear.
Great. Any recommendations on next year or things that you'd like to see done differently?
We did go through a couple of things that we would like to look at as a possible change. We looked at, get my notes here, all right, allowing for amounts lower than $5,000, which is our minimum, allowing for smaller grants to be made to innovative projects, new projects in their, in their very early stages of development. One of the reasons we chose to, one of the reasons we chose to not fund one of the applicants was that it was, it sounded like a great idea, but there wasn't enough meat on the bones. There weren't any MOUs regarding the partnerships or the proposed partnerships with carrying out the project. So something smaller that would help an organization kind of further develop what seemed to be a really worthwhile project, that would, that would help in the future, if that's something the council would consider.
That it?
Sure. I'm absolutely open for questions, which I assume there will be.
Yes, they are. They're lining up. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you and the rest of the group for all the work on this. I know it's not an easy task that we give to you, and I appreciate the kind of the progress that we've seen between last year and this year. Just one question, and that is the organizations that are getting less than they asked for and the organizations who are getting nothing, are you giving them feedback on maybe what your thinking is and how, so that they could better prepare for future requests?
Yes. The organizations that we're recommending to not receive funding this year, of course, each organization for specific reasons, we are letting them know through Erin Kelly, staff member at the city, that they know why they were not recommended, and not just that there were other proposals that were more competitive, but maybe more specifics that will help them craft a better proposal, better application for next cycle, which we'd always encourage. For organizations that may have received less than they had requested and yet still received a grant, we would let them know, well, this is why you received this much, and, I mean, this is why you received this much, and it was less than what you requested, and this is why, these are reasons behind it.
Super, thank you.
I'm happy to ask, I'm happy to answer specifics if you have a specific question.
No, no, that was exactly what I was looking for. The people, the organizations need to know what they can do better for next time.
Yes, the more detailed feedback we can give them, the better they can fashion, if the project is good project, the better they can fashion their application.
And if it's a bad project, they get a better feel for what are good projects, right?
True, true.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. Appreciate all your hard work doing this. It's really important for our community, you know, trying to get money. It's really important for our community, you know, trying to get money to these type of organizations that are doing these great projects is always tough and just thank you. Couple of questions. Montgomery County Television, that seems to be a new entity requesting money from the city. What was it that struck you that said that that was, I know it's eligible, but why did you guys say that?
What made it compelling to us?
Yes. What's their story?
There, there were a couple of things about that proposal, just want to look back and make sure I have my notes on them. It was, it was STEAM project, which one of the, one of the focus points for the council, STEM or STEAM, it was a STEM project or STEAM project which fit in well with the guidelines of the, of the application, the guidelines of the council. It was targeted, really, it was targeted to youth and teens and low, low and moderate income and had a high percentage of low and moderate income participants. It was, it was a very innovative project with a mentorship mentoring program. I mean, it was really long, it was a 40-week course. It is a 40-week program of television production. It was, it seemed really detailed. They had their ducks in a row. They had their partnerships put out really well described in the application and it seemed they, they had the right targeted audience or a right targeted, targeted audience and it just, it was a really well-done proposal.
How many years have they been doing this project?
I believe this is a new project for Tacoma Park. I know this is the first year they've requested money from Tacoma Park that we're recommending that they receive the project, oh, they receive funding. I'm trying to, I believe they've done the project before, but this is the first time they're applying to the city for this program.
And is this part of the county's cable television entity or is this a separate?
As far as the application laid out, this, this seems separate from the county's cable TV.
Operations or?
Operations or entity, yeah.
Okay. And were they, are they working out of Tacoma Park's television station or?
I believe they're working out of their Montgomery County offices. I don't, I, that's a good question. I do not know the answer. I, I believe they're working out of their county facility and not, I don't believe they're working in Tacoma Park, out of the Tacoma Park facility, but through their, their home facility.
Okay. You know, as part of my curiosity is that, you know, cable grant funds, you know, come to the county, come to the municipalities, it's millions of dollars, right? If this is a separate entity, you know, given, us giving them $5,000 doesn't, doesn't really matter, right? But if it's part of, you know, Montgomery County Television, you know, I'm just curious why they couldn't flip the bill themselves.
Well, the, the project, the project budget, I mean, you should have received the project budget with your materials. The project budget was well within what we felt was appropriate for the, the size of the project and the scope of the project. In terms of the, the money we're recommending to the council to be awarded, it was, it was definitely money that we felt would be well spent. They did not, they did not list any of the cable providers as donors, as donors or potential donors to this program. So I know that cable providers have to give a certain amount of money in their region to nonprofits. This was not a nonprofit that was, whether it's because this is a newer project or because Montgomery County cable operators give money elsewhere, some of that I do not know, but the match with, the matching funds were there for the, for our requirements, but they did not include other cable providers.
Councilmember Smith, if I might, I just was able to look it up on the world wide web and this organization does business also as Montgomery Community Media and they are actually an independent nonprofit organization that provides access to public media, so I don't think it's the same thing as the county's TV organization.
Thank you. One other question regarding Real Food for Kids Montgomery. What, what is that program that's on nutrition?
Yeah, Real Food for Kids Montgomery has submitted to us in the past and I recall distinctly last cycle, previous cycle, they had submitted a, what sounded like a really good proposal, what was a really good proposal, but the, the project that they submitted for just didn't seem as feasible. They had submitted a program, a proposal on a project that had to deal with educating students, low-income students about nutrition and then having them take that information home and it was, it was a very involved project and we didn't feel like it was, the ability to carry out the project didn't, wasn't there in our, in our opinion, it wasn't there to the level that we wanted to see. Grant making is sometimes a risk, but we felt like it just, it was, it was too far a reach for us to feel comfortable in making that big a risk on. This program seemed much more holistic. It's nutrition, it's a nutrition-based program, which is their main focus. It's a nutrition-based program. It targets low-income students. They have great partnerships with schools to not only do the programs within the schools' after-school program, but also have the schools identify those low-income students through the counseling office and such, so the targeted audiences would be there. Their, their ability to carry out the project, they had a great history, so we felt that this program was less, there was much less chance for this program to not hit all of its successes that, that were laid out in the proposal last cycle. We felt like this, this proposal was really competitive. It had some really great goals that were achievable within the realm of the application that they laid out.
Okay, and just one other question. The initial meeting you had with potential grantees, how did that go? Was that really successful or?
We actually had two meetings.
Oh, and then did you visit any of the potential grantees, their offices to do follow-ups?
We, we did, after the two meetings we had, we had a daytime meeting during business hours and then an evening meeting, just to allow for as broad a section of people as we can, people with different schedules. Any, any follow-up questions, we definitely opened it up. Erin, Ms. Kelly fielded any questions, sent out any follow-up questions that panel members had, but there, we didn't go and visit organizations, potential applicants in the, at that point.
Okay.
We did have, we felt like two sessions and we made ourselves available for any follow-up questions that they had.
That was enough?
Well, we, we felt like it was enough. We also partnered with the Tacoma Foundation, so we were able to have applicants come to one meeting and basically ask questions of two different, funding organizations to basically broaden their reach without having to expend as much time as they would have to go to here to see this potential funder and go here to see that potential funder. So we tried to make it as easy as possible, definitely looking for ways to do that in the future, but that was a nice, a nice bonus for all concerned.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. I noticed that some of the, thanks for the work and the great report. I noticed that some of the grantees received the amount that they asked for and then in other cases it's less. Is that just a function of the winners or the awardees were all chosen and then you looked at how much money you had and tried to figure out how to get it there or is there a different sort of process for that?
It's actually multifaceted would be. There, there is the reality of this is how many dollars we have to spend, these are how many projects we feel are the most compelling and the most deserving of our recommendation. When we come to that grouping, we then say, okay, this is how much money we have, let's delve a little further into the applications and the organizations and see, uncover more information or address more information and deliberate a little bit more. I mean, for instance, DCAC submitted an application. It was an individual who submitted an application and DCAC acted as fiscal agent for her. She was, she's doing a program with refugees, very compelling proposal. This woman has huge reach into the refugee community and on multiple levels and we felt she will carry out this project. We felt that it deserved full funding because the budget was so tight and it really was, the budget was so tight, it was so, it was such an ambitious and yet possible program that we felt like cutting $1 from that program would basically be cutting a dollar out of her miniscule compensation for this large project. Whereas a program that, a program, for instance, Dance Exchange, that we did cut the amount that we awarded them down from their original request, we did cut it down, but we felt that, one, they would still be able to carry out the project as originally outlined in the application and, two, because of the size and scope of Dance Exchange, they had the ability to, one, raise money from a lot of, a lot of other sources where this individual going through DCAC as fiscal agent would not and there were also overhead costs put into that budget, which are true and just, I mean, it's okay to do that, but we felt like some of the overhead costs could be covered by other funding sources. Whereas the overhead, there was so little overhead cost in the DCAC application.
So without asking you to talk in detail about why the, the three that weren't funded, not because of ineligible, but just where you just chose not to fund them, why that was, but if there had been like a lot more money, could others have actually been awarded or was it like these three just don't quite make the cut anyway and if there had been more money, like a little extra would have gone to Dance Exchange or the Boy Scouts? If you see what I'm asking?
I see, I see what you mean. If there were more money, to answer definitively, I would, I would have to go back to the committee then basically and re-vote on it, but it, it would be my feeling that, given what we had said, there were the three organizations that were not awarded, I believe Cheer withdrew their application, ACG, Adventist Community Services, they were asked to, to revise their application because it was not complete and they chose not to revise it and submit it. They'd also had significant problems attracting anywhere near the percentage of Tacoma Park residents, that's the minimum, which is 75%.
Yep.
So right there, they would just be ineligible because they're, so we, I mean, we can't make them revise their application submitted so it's complete, but you know, if it were close and they were maybe at 60%, but they, they have had a very difficult time, self-admittedly a difficult time of attracting enough Tacoma Park residents. And the, the Village of Tacoma was the other organization that we chose not to fund. That organization has an annual budget of approximately $8,000. The minimum grant that we provide through this program is $5,000. That's a significant amount of their overall budget. There were a couple of reasons, that was one of them. Two, we know, I know that they, we know that they are getting a grant, a small grant, a smaller grant from the Tacoma Foundation, which we basically farmed out the small grants program to the Tacoma Foundation. So they are getting a small grant through the Tacoma Foundation, smaller grant, something that we felt was more appropriate to the, what their needs were as well as their overall budget. They were asking for things that kind of included a lot of overhead, like a large percentage of a part-time staff member that would be more, it was an operating grant and we do, for this, we do project grants, the Tacoma Foundation does do operating grants as well as project grants. This is a project grant and we just felt like they're getting grants from the Tacoma Foundation through the small grants program, it's definitely more appropriate to their size and scope.
Okay, last question. Thanks for all that information. We talked, I think, earlier, the last time you were here about doing more in terms of follow-up after the grants are awarded and I don't know whether that's something you've really gotten into yet, but can you just say a word or two about that?
Yes, I have to say Erin Kelly, since she's come on board, has jumped in with both feet. She's been, I would say tireless in, in speaking with the funders during the process. We had a lot of questions after the initial letter of intent was due, we had some questions and she was on the phone in contact with them, posing the questions, getting the answers and then relaying the answers to the committee so that we can assess how they, how they answered, did they answer our questions as we needed to, what, what new information did they tell us? It was really helpful. So the, the process has become a closer one with the applicants, both during the applicant stage and, and I would expect, given what we need to do and what, what we're tasked with, that Erin will be continuing during the reporting process to, to, to closely monitor how they're using the funds, but also get feedback from them, what was, you know, what is good about this process, what would you like to see different, you know, can we work with you, can we help put you in contact with other partnerships, with other organizations to have partnerships so there's no overlap, so there's a medium of the minds and a service providing.
Great, thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your years of service and other committee members' service as well. I want to just, given the interest of time, I'll just make a, a series of comments and questions and then react to, to what you wish. So a couple of sort of overall questions and interest, the, it looks like there's some differences in how the grantees report the number of people served. And some are talking about their audience and others are talking about the people who are really in the program. And I think in the future it'd be good to be consistent about that and ask people to describe how many people, how many actors, how many students will be in the program and then what's the, who's going to receive it, right? So it's the audience of the whole county, it's a million people, it's, you know, it's 300 people who watch a show. And just really focusing on that part of it would be a consistency that you guys could ask for in the future. That's not something that, that's on us, not you guys, but it would be good to try to make that happen.
It's something, I have to say, it's something that the committee is definitely cognizant of and then we would look at something from like Historic Tacoma, Tacoma Radio, that we would look at the number of participants that are actually kind of doing the work. We wouldn't, I mean, we would consider, oh, the, the audience will hear this, this, this work, but we really try to look at the people that are taking part as well as the audience, but in a, weigh them differently.
Yeah, I'm just asking for the information to get standardized, so the Pump House pop out is probably not going to have 300, you know, people deeply engaged in the, in the, in the activity.
I'll just say when I've worked on grants, things we call it served versus reach.
Yeah, that's good.
And that's a good, two different categories, so.
The, the second issue I wanted to raise is that I'm a little concerned about the breadth of our grant program in that most of these, almost every grant that we're, we're proposing to make is directed at youth and most of them, there's a few exceptions, for example, the, the Montgomery County Collaboration Council ACE program, but most of them are focused on outgoing students who want to act or perform through some sort of media device. So we're first on youth and then second, we're for a subset of youth who want to do those things. So for example, a diverse proposal that would have attracted, I think, a different set of youth was the one to do training and computer repair. And then I'm not advocating for that proposal versus other ones, but there's a different set of people who are going to apply for that versus folks who are outgoing, want to be in front of a camera, want to perform. And I'm a little worried that that's a really narrow slice of the community and then let me, let me keep going.
Okay.
And then the, the other one is, is youth versus seniors, youth versus different populations. So some of these, there's one grant that has both youth and seniors component. The rest of them that identify a specific target group are all youth. And so, for example, I'm concerned about the, the Village of Tacoma Park project not being in there, one, because in there, one, because I think it's a good organization, but maybe not for the right amount, but because it really helps us reach an important population in the city. And so the concerns are sort of, one, we're not getting enough applicants that are focused on those groups, but, two, that if we have one, you know, sort of really thinking about that. So that's something that I'm, like, if it were up to me, I think I probably would go against your recommendations and probably try to find a way to bring them in. And then the last comment I wanted to make is, following up on Councilmember Smith's comments on the Montgomery Community Television projects, you know, I'd really want to explore whether that nonprofit isn't eligible for any county cable grant franchise money, and I look at that project versus the, versus the Ryzome DC Project. It's a, you know, it's a county-based, part of a large budget, at least that the county film agency or department has. Ryzome's a Tacoma Park-based nonprofit, right, so not just the students, but actually the, some, at least of the adults who are organizing it, coordinating it, are physically here, the business is based here, they go out and buy lunch at our businesses, right, so there's a, there's an additive community effect, there are other ripples to focusing on an organization like that, too. So, those are some of the things that I just wanted to flag for you that have raised questions for me, and then just sort of following up with city staff afterwards. I'd like to see more about the Pyramid Atlantic Arts Center pot-house pop-up, only because I just, I just couldn't understand what that was, based on the description. So I just, you don't need to explain that now, Mr. Cordial, but I'll look at the grant application, or, just from my own edification.
Do you want me to respond to the?
Yeah, if there's any that you're responsible, but don't feel like you have to go into all that.
No, that's all right. We really enjoy doing the work we do on the committee, so I have absolutely no problem in relaying, so, the Adventist Community Services, it was a great proposal, it was a great application, the computer repair thing, I mean, here we go, hitting, hitting a population that, that would really help change their lives. It'd teach them about computer repair, it brought in all this equipment, they would learn a very valuable and worthwhile trade, so it's a great proposal, but they just were nowhere near 75% city residents. So we just, I mean, we just can't, we're not allowed, I mean, we could make the recommendation, but we'd be making the recommendation against the guidelines that is set out by council, so we just, there was just no way. With regards to Village Tacoma Park, when I first got the application, I was like, finally, we'll be able to fund them, but just looking at, again, the guidelines and the requirements to fund a $5,000 grant for an organization with an $8,000 budget that gets, the city bus is an in-kind service, that gets volunteer drivers to drive them to things, it was, it was a series of 12 arts and humanities events for about $10 each ticket, and 20 people each thing, and it just, the budget just wasn't, it wasn't there, there just wasn't enough there, and the fact that we, in a way, are funding them through the foundation, through the Small Grants Program, and that's city money that's being shunted to the foundation, or through, to Village of Tacoma Park, through the foundation. It's not, it's not like we said, oh, they're getting money from them, so we don't have to worry, we just were not able to fund them, given the requirements that we have on us to, it's a, it's a great program, clearly serves a very necessary part, a necessary component of our community, the aging population, I'm glad they got a grant from the foundation, I voted for it myself on the foundation, I thought it was worthwhile, it just didn't fit the guidelines that are laid out. Ryzome, great organization, we funded, the city has funded them in the past for their project, but Ryzome, they just didn't have the developed relationships with the schools for programs, programs that were going to take place within the school day, that we know, that the committee knows, just given the committee's experience, that have to be set up well in advance. MCPS is a large and planning-rich organization, you can't just set up something now for September, this has to be done way in advance, given the size and scope that they are looking for, which is why we really would love to see seed money, like a smaller grant, something below the $5,000 minimum that we can give for some, and that's really why, that Ryzome application was the, kind of the genesis of our idea of, like, we need a smaller, we need a smaller amount of money to give that seed money to, so.
Let me just ask one follow-up. So I thought in the past we had turned down Ryzome grants as opposed to awarding them?
No, we did, and actually, Ryzome was very laudatory and came to a council meeting to report on that, and said that it was actually one of the things that helped them kind of really get going, so.
Because they're new, and, yeah, money like that is like, is like gold, I mean, to get an organization off the ground.
And just to go back to the first two points you raised, I wasn't, again, disagreeing with the training, the computer training grant, the choice you guys are making there, or the Village one, but rather that those are examples of two projects.
We need more of those.
That serve more people than just, I mean, it really is a narrow slice of people who want to get up on stage and do this, or in a more entertaining way, do something like this.
But it's also the media, the media aspect of it, the multi-faceted media aspect of it, which is apparently all the rage all over the place, not just radio, not just television, documentaries, but it's also, they were real, those organizations were really tied in with getting a low-income population, which, again, is our, is a requirement for us, really high percentage of low and moderate income people, low, especially low-income people, as for Montgomery, Montgomery County Television, is really, their percentage of low-income people were really high, and that really appealed to us.
Great. Well, thank you very much. We really appreciate all the work that goes into this from everyone, please tell everyone on the committee, thank you, and we are voting on this, I think, next week, right? Next week, so, thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
All right, our last item, Emergency Tree Fund.
And at the outset of this item, I wanted to take a moment to recognize a new staff person whom you all have heard about, but have not had a chance yet to meet, and that's our new urban forest manager, Jan van Zupen. He comes to the city with over 20 years of experience in urban forest management, previously worked for the cities of Annapolis and College Park, and did some private landscaping work as well. I won't steal too much of your thunder, though, if you want to go ahead and say a few things about yourself in my way of introduction.
My name is Jan Franz Oetva, I'm, as you've just heard, the new urban forest manager, and I'm very grateful to have an opportunity to introduce myself to all of you. As Jason mentioned, I worked previously for the past 10 years for the city of Annapolis as the urban forester, and also did a lot of development review of landscape plans and tree preservation measures, so that comes in really handy in the work that I'm currently doing for the city of Tacoma Park. Worked also for the city of Colts Park for a year and a half as the horticulturist, did, was the urban forester, and also dealt with a lot of horticultural issues. Did go to the University of Maryland prior to that, studied landscape, architectural landscape management, and prior to that, I worked for a landscape contractor for four years, Evergore Landscaping, and it has come in really handy in understanding the practical side of tree planting and so forth. So, came on board with the city, started on the 17th of April. So I've been working for the city of Tacoma Park for about two months, and I'm really passionate about the environment, I know the city is too, a lot of people have been really nice and welcoming. I think there's also sometimes things to navigate that are not always easy, and I think one of the things I want to really focus on is be solution-oriented and try to work with people to come to a reasonable solution that works for everyone, and I really hope, look forward to working with all of you, with the residents, being of service to them, and developing and maintaining a thriving urban forest in the city of Tacoma Park, so, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. I know you've been busy these last two months, we're glad to finally meet you.
Yeah, yeah, I actually met your mother.
I know.
It was actually very nice to be of assistance to her, so.
Jan started the week after the storm, the week before the storm, that blew all the debris around, knocked trees down, stuff, so he's had some baptism by fire.
Well, the item you have before you tonight actually grew out of the budget session that you all just finished, I think it was Mayor Stewart's suggestion to look at creating an emergency tree fund, to provide funding for folks, either low-income or limited income, to address emergency tree issues. So the packet item and the cover sheet you have there tonight is just kind of our first broad-brush approach at some issues that the council may want to consider. My understanding of that discussion tonight, and you may want to extend it to another time, is kind of try to figure out how you would like this emergency tree fund to work, how you want it, how to determine who is eligible, how, whether you set limits on the amount of funds that are available, whether you'd like arrangements for the funds to be capped at a certain amount per user, or if they get what they need, whether you want to look into ideas like payment back of the funds, once the property is sold, for those folks that are elderly, there could be a lien placed on the property, so that the point in time when that property is sold, the funds used to remove that tree could be paid back at that time. So there's any number of concepts. One of the things that we thought would probably be most helpful right off the bat is the city has had a number of programs to assist low-income folks. There's two that I'm aware of, one was the exterior home repair program that was administered by the Department of Housing and Community Development, and we followed that same eligibility scenario and criteria with our program to help low- and moderate-income folks with energy home improvements. So the application that you see attached to this cover sheet is the one that we're currently using for the home energy audit and upgrades, and that basically was just a redraft of what the Housing and Community Development Office used to use for the exterior home program. So it's a, it creates a, an eligibility based on number of people in the home and the income of the folks in the home, and uses the criteria of 85% of the median household for Montgomery County is, if you're within 85%, you're eligible to be considered for the program. There's also the city's Emergency Assistance Fund, which is actually a little bit different, and I'm less familiar with that, but my understanding is it's run by a third party. It has a, I mean, a third-party contract with the city, it's totally overseen by the city, but it has eligibility requirements and a much more extensive application process that the third party reviews and, and, not approves, but certifies, and so it's another avenue that may want to be considered. My understanding is, I think it delves a bit more into other assistance programs and try to identify, you know, what other programs people are involved in prior to determining whether they're eligible for the emergency assistance, and those funds are used for payment of utility bills and those kinds of things. So that's kind of one of the issues, trying to figure out how the application process would, would work to determine eligibility. And then the next issue was, what issues do you want to cover? Just tree removal, tree pruning as well, only extremely hazardous trees or trees in decline? So we'd have to kind of establish a criteria of what you think would be covered, and, and then another issue is how to pay the funds. In this one, a lot of the others, we just throw out options and have less of an opinion, and this one, we actually have an opinion, which is for determining the contractor, we really think, because the city does typically have contracts with multiple tree removal companies, so we use one of three companies for our tree removal work, so we have a pretty good sense of reasonable cost for tree services, and we know, kind of from those companies that we work with, that they're licensed, that they're insured, that they're dependable. So rather than tell the eligible homeowner, go find a contractor, send us the bill, we'll pay it, we'd rather identify the contractor ourselves. If, once you're eligible to the program, and we determine through the tree permit process that we already have, that your tree is hazardous, needs to come down, then we could use one of our contractors, or another contractor that we think is qualified to do the work. So, that's one piece where we really feel like, rather than just allow people to use whichever contractor they want, which we would then have to vet anyway to make sure they're licensed and certified and insured, better for us to handle the contractual end of, of the removal at that point. So, I think that's pretty much it, and, you know, at this point, it's, my understanding is it's just a general discussion, looking for guidance, and then we could come back with sort of a more firmed-up plan in the future.
Great, thank you. I think, just so everybody, if you look at your cover sheet, as the Director Public Works identified, there's five different areas, and I would just say, from my notes that I took on this, what you outlined for who's eligible and the eligibility determination using our energy upgrade program, if, from what I've heard, that's working well, I would say, stick with it and, I think, go in that direction. I also think regarding what conditions will be covered, the removal, I would say, the removal of hazardous tree and the hazardous pruning, since that can, pruning can get pretty expensive as well. I had a question on the selection of contractor, and it's more about legally what we can do, because I know when we did the home energy audits, we couldn't, we had to give people a, like, a list of the companies to use, so, under, under this, do we have to check with the city attorney? Can we sort of contract with the tree companies, as you're suggesting, or do we need to look into that?
We can certainly run that by the city attorney's office and make sure we're not running afoul of procurement requirements. I imagine if we used one of the three contractors that the council approves, you know, we come before you for on-call or tree company contracts, typically writing off some other competitively awarded contract, you all authorize that. Of course, it's assumed to be for city work, so we'd have to make sure that the next time that contract comes up, it could also stipulate, it could also be for the emergency tree removal program, and then I think we'd be covered, but we can certainly check in with Ken and make sure.
Great, and then I think on the options for expenditure of funds, I like to see, as we put this program into place for maybe a pilot time, like, a year or two, for the city to cover the total costs, see how it goes, see how many people we have coming to us, what the cost is before we set up any other type of system, and I'm just particularly conscious of placing liens on people's property, especially if they're lower income and they're having a hard time doing this, you know, adding to that when they sell their property later on, so, at the moment, that's where I would suggest we move. Councilmember Mail.
Yeah, thank you, and nice to meet you, and tell me, what pronounced your last name? Van Zupen?
Franz Oetvan.
Van Zupen, okay, thank you. I, on the combination of the eligibility criteria, right now written as 85%, and then sort of the expenditure of funds, I guess I'd actually prefer to see sort of a sliding scale, so if you make 85% of the median, you might get 15% of the total cost of the removal covered, but if you make 5%, you'd get, you know, 85%, like, sort of the inverse of that, right? So we can really focus the money on people who are, who are the most needy, and I'm making up an example, but something that, that would help us make sure the money gets a little bit further along, just because, as you know, there's tree removals can be very expensive for a single tree, so we could use up one more storm like the one we had in your starting week, and, you know, the money would be gone in a weekend. So that's sort of one, one comment. The, I agree with Mayor Stewart in terms of, you know, the hazardous trees and hazardous pruning, focusing on those issues. I guess my experience has been that I see a lot of particularly oak trees where the branch tips die, and within five years, those trees are all dead, none of them seem to come back, so as much as possible, and given your expertise, trying to be somewhat proactive about this. And so I put that out there because, for example, if people wanted to, people with lots of trees on their properties, wanted to indicate that they are pre-qualified, they meet the income qual, the criteria for the program, and then having you guys drive and look at their property and say, you know, okay, well, they haven't, for another reason, flagged the tree, but now we go out, we look, we do a drive-by, and we can immediately identify that there's a high-hazard tree on the site, or we're pretty sure that one's going to be. So, you know, something like that, where you guys are sort of helping with the screening process, could be valuable. It could even be that that, just simply, simply the screening and the evaluation, rather than the removal, could be, could be beneficial to people, but I just sort of. But I just sort of put that out there for you. And then I think I'll stop there in the interest of time, but I like most of what you've otherwise outlined in here, on the issue of contractors agreeing with Mayor Stewart, that if it's a matter of having a list, especially if we're only covering partial costs, that may make sense, and letting companies figure out how to qualify for that list, would be seems like a good middle ground to what you indicated that you preferred. And then my last comment is just a reminder that we have a request from a neighborhooding association to meet with one or both of you, and this, it's a great opportunity to sort of field-test this. You definitely get some, I think, income qualifying people who would attend and otherwise talk about the tree program. So I will come to that meeting whenever it gets scheduled as well, so you won't be alone.
Yeah, I think it's June 20.
Okay, great, yeah, thanks.
And Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. Well, I want to join my colleague and welcome you to the city. Good that you're finally here. My question is regarding, you know, the racial equity impact statement in this proposal. In general, I like it because, you know, you always get the calls from people that say, "This tree just fell after the storm, and, you know, what do I do?" Or, "It's going to cost me a ton of money to fix this." But the people that I'm concerned about are elderly, those people that are not tech-savvy or may not even have a computer in their house, or how would we access, you know, these people, get them to fill out this application? Could we do it, you know, using a tablet or something, rather than having them, you know, trying to eliminate the paper issue? Because, you know, most people are startled by the fact that this huge event has happened. But how do we make sure that they can get these resources without having to go through the traditional way of, you know, whether it's the home, the energy upgrade program? I mean, if you go through that, it's not because your house is, there's a big tree in your house, or a tree just has fallen over on your fence or something, that there's this major thing happening. How can we streamline it or make it easier for this group of people to be able to fill out the application and for your department to consider it?
Yeah, well, you raised some interesting questions that I hadn't really thought through yet. And where I thought you were going with it is, how are we going to advertise this? And that was kind of a question I was going to have for you. Is this something we're going to have as an insert in bills that we send out in the future? Is this something that council members are going to put out in their information? It certainly, I'm assuming, will be something that you all will know, and as potential candidate, you know, eligible folks in your wards, you kind of know who they are, that you could say, "Hey, there is this emergency tree fund program now, which there hasn't been before, so you may want to apply for that." One of the things I think is, I don't anticipate we'll be using this for trees that have already fallen, because typically, those are handled by insurance companies if they land on your house. If they just land in your yard and they didn't hit anything and they're not a problem, I really don't see that as an emergency.
But what if you don't have homeowner's insurance?
Well, if you don't have homeowner's insurance, then you certainly could apply, and that would be considered. So what I thought this was more about is kind of a similar situation that we had on Fourth Avenue recently, a huge, massive ash tree that had emerald ash for two years ago, and was just, you could watch the bark pop and watch the branches break, and the homeowner was unable to afford the removal of that. So I would see this program as being, getting to those folks that have these dead trees looming over their house, or a dead branch of a large tree looming over their house. It's really a hazard to them and/or their neighbors. And again, I see that you would be major proselytizers in this program, as you would identify those folks in those situations and could let them know that there is this program available.
Right.
In terms of the application itself, I don't see it as being difficult to complete. I mean, usually the simplification is, "Oh, you can do it online." I'm thinking, a lot of these folks are going to be elderly, it needs to be hard copy, it needs to be something that you can fill in. We can certainly take that kind of application in our office or in the city building, you know, any of the administrative offices can be, you know, kind of informed about the application, and it'll say right on here where to, you know, where to turn it into. So I would think that, you know, a paper copy, I know for, might help with that. We'll also have it available online, but I'm thinking for elderly folks, probably a paper copy is what's going to be the easiest.
And I would like to say that I would support us putting a lien on a property if the individual can't afford the removal of the tree, or pruning, or whatever. Or maybe we could split the costs, but, you know, try to make sure that the work gets done. You know, I've had constituents that have just, you know, flat-out said that they didn't have the money to do it, because they just bought their house, so that there wasn't enough money to, you know, remove a tree. And my mom had one removed, and it cost eight thousand dollars. So it's not a cheap process.
Yeah, yeah.
And she still has a huge stump in the backyard. So, you know, the more we can do to help people make sure that, you know, these hazards are eliminated, but there's a way that if you're on a fixed income, all your money is not, you know, eaten up by just this tree removal. All right, thank you.
And Councilmember Schultz?
I am, I'm glad we've thought of this program. I would like it to be able to be used by some, for people that will, that have already suffered considerable damage from the storm in mid-April. In my experience, I know of, in this recent storm, you know, one family that happened, what happens with elderly people, a lot of, or older, older people, just leave out the word elderly, because it's not really relevant, is that once they pay off their mortgage, they sometimes don't pay any attention to the fact that their homeowner's insurance disappears, and that they've got to go out and find an agent and get it activated. That's very easy for people to do, they're just so grateful, they think, "Oh, my gosh, we got our mortgage paid off, we don't have anything to worry about." This, there are two incidents where trees have fallen on houses in my ward, both of which were older people, and in neither case do they have insurance. And of course, you sort of sit there and scratch your head and say, "Well, that's really dumb." But, so what? This is what has happened. And so somehow or another, I think if this program's going to be used at all, this is certainly one of the, one of the two main things I see it could be used for, is to help people who have, you know, this is going to be like post-disaster kind of situations, where, you know, the tree looks fine, and nobody knew there was a problem with it, and then a big storm comes along, and all of a sudden, there's a catastrophe. And I know that if there's insurance on the house, the cost to the borrower can be just pretty much nominal. So it can, so the situation can just vary all over the place. And I do think the idea that you mentioned, Ms. Braithwaite, about where you have pending hazardous, and everybody's sort of pointing at this tree, including the people that live there, and saying, "Oh, my gosh, this is just a matter of time. This would be something where we could do it, come in and step in in a very sort of predictable, patient sort of way." And I think you're right on about the fact that we councilmembers can, you know, would be the logical people who bring this thing to the program, to the attention of the possibly affected residents, because we oftentimes hear about somebody saying to us this very thing, "I'd love to get rid of this tree, I'm really worried, I don't know what to do about it." Or what happens is, a lot of times, they'll come to me and say, "My neighbor's got a tree that's leaning over, it's dying, and he won't do a darn thing about it, and I'm just worried sick, and I don't know what to do." And so, you know, these are the sorts of things, as councilmembers, we try to negotiate. I'm a little hesitant about putting a lien on a person's property, because sometimes people who are up in years, they may want to look at getting a reverse mortgage. If there's already a lien on that property, it may be impossible for them to do that, or it may make it very difficult for them to be able to get a reverse mortgage, to help them stay in that house for a number of years. That's just one thing I think we need to take into account. But I think this is a good program. You know, if we have a situation where we have a terrible storm like we did this past year, this, about two months ago, and it wipes out the entirety of our fund, well, fine, that's what it's there for, and then in the next budget, we can, you know, refill that fund to make sure that there's money there so that we can take care of the people, because this is basic, oftentimes situations that are simply out of the control of property owners. And it's not their fault, it's not like they went out there, killed the tree, and made it get old or get diseased. So I think basically, you know, it's just a matter of refining it, figuring it out a little bit, and talking to, I mean, you know, using real-life examples, I think would be a good way to figure out how to design it.
Councilmember Kova?
Thank you, and thank you both for the presentation. A few observations and then one or two questions. I think I was assuming this included down trees too, as other people have talked about, if they don't have insurance, at least. I assume that's sort of a hazardous thing in and of itself, even if it didn't land on the house, that's what I was imagining. On the liens, I kind of lean against the liens. If we set the amount at the right level, I wouldn't have that concern, I understand what Councilmember Smith was saying, if it was too much of a benefit to somebody, but if they're eligible, we ought to make them eligible. In terms of Councilmember Mail's comments, I'm open to the sliding scale, but I do worry if something is going to cost eight thousand dollars, then maybe that's just, you mentioned that, I think, and that's listed in here, that might be too much, even if somebody otherwise met the income levels. So those are just observations. Two sort of linked questions, would, I assume in this case, a person would still have to get a permit and go through that, and would they also have, would the hazardous, would the replacement trees be required, and how would that be funded?
Yeah, sure. So typically, if a tree is hazardous, then there can be a waiver, so in that case, it expedites the process, and there's no replacement requirement. So I think, you know, a key point would be really to avoid hazards from, you know, becoming, you know, fall on houses and so forth. I think that was kind of the objective of the program. I think with that, maybe also an opportunity to raise more awareness of, you know, I've noticed a lot of dead trees throughout the city, to make people more aware, maybe we can use this program also to raise the awareness, that people become more cognizant, because I think a lot of people are also not aware enough of the dangers.
That they have a dead tree, they may not know that?
Yeah, yeah, there's actually a lot of dead trees throughout the city, I've noticed, and I think slowly but surely, hopefully, can make people more aware and that they address it before, you know, anything catastrophic happens.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome to the seat.
Thank you.
First, I'll give you a little bit of background, so you know where I'm coming from. You know, in the last two decades, I've seen a gradual but significant shift in people's opinions about trees, where before, you know, we were very proud of being a tree city and having a heavy canopy. Through these years, I've seen people become much more concerned that power gets knocked out during the storms, and so we've seen, you know, great support within the community of PEPCO coming in and trimming the trees near power lines so that we don't have the power outages. And of course, as they trim some of those trees very radically, they kill the trees. It's a, the way the process works, you know, it's a gradual removal of the trees along the streets near the power lines, and it's done in such a way that we don't lose all the canopy at once, but we're going to lose it, you know, within the next few years. But there's also, I see a shift in people's attitudes about trees that, you know, many more people are worried about dangerous trees, and they feel that trees can be dangerous, not just because they're dying, or that limbs are dying, but just because they're big trees near their house, and they've seen other houses get crushed with the trees. So it's just attitudes are changing about trees. And even, we've had some discussions here on the council about the fact that, well, trees get in the way of solar power, you know, maybe the solar panels are more important than the trees in our community. So that's a shift that I see in the community values, and that I don't particularly support all of those. I'm disappointed to see that the trees are being viewed as a lesser priority than other things. So that's kind of the background of where I'm coming from as we talk about this. And I'll just tag on to Councilmember Kova's question earlier about tree replacement. I think if we're doing this, that we should absolutely also include a tree replacement when we do remove a hazardous tree. It's something that, yes, it could be waived, but that's not the priority I think we should be setting within the city. I think we should be providing a tree replacement for that tree. I think we need to talk future, further on the council, aside from this particular program, about how we can encourage more tree planting in, on private property within the city. Going down through the list here of who is eligible, I agree with your points there, and how we determine eligibility, what conditions will be covered. I support the removal of hazardous trees, the pruning of the hazardous trees, or hazardous limbs. But I'm hesitant to support the removal of the down trees. People should have insurance to cover that. For the most part, insurance is a requirement of a mortgage, some of the people we're talking about, or maybe elderly and don't have a mortgage anymore, and so they've dropped their insurance. But it seems like a responsibility, and I don't know how far a government should go in trying to take care of residents and fill their responsibilities that they should be filling themselves. So I would not support that at this time. Selection of contractor, I agree with you, that if we're paying the tab, then we ought to have control over who we're hiring to do the work. And then the expenditure of funds, I could support either the, covering the whole thing or a sliding scale. I was all for saying that, yeah, a lien on the property would make a lot of sense, because that would, number one, it would let us extend this program on into the future, and support that. But I have to say that Councilmember Schultz brought up a point that I don't know enough about to say that it would preclude people from getting a reverse mortgage. Maybe we need to think that through on whether it actually does, and whether there's some way we can get around that. I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Perfect.
Do you have any questions for us, or need any further direction? I know there's still some things up in the air that we'll probably have to come back to and discuss, but does this give you enough information to kind of flush this out?
Yeah, and I think one thing, just, you know, the hazardous trees and, or hazardous pruning, it's really, you know, trees that are an imminent threat to people or property. So I think that's kind of the key focus, I would think, of the idea, so.
I mean, if it's laying on the ground, it's not very hazardous.
Right.
I guess the question that we're not in full agreement on is where, it's not necessarily laying in the ground in someone's backyard and not doing anything, but if it is, you know, something that is on someone's property that is causing some potential harm without it being removed soon, and if the person doesn't have insurance and can't afford it. So I think there's disagreement on council on whether or not that would be covered, yeah.
Just waiting on that point. So if a homeowner had peeling paint on their house, we would cite them. The peeling paint isn't a threat or hazard in any way, other than property values adjoining properties. So, and not to pick on the resident, but I just use it as an example. Along Carroll Avenue, in Ward 5, just across Long Branch, there's a house that's had a tree, a massive oak tree lying parallel to the front fence for two years. It's just lying there. Now, I don't know if it's a requirement by the city to remove large objects lying in your yard like that, but if that person couldn't pay for it, I don't know why we wouldn't cover that the same way we cover peeling paint.
I can see your point on that. My one thought with the, if it falls on the house is, you know, our, that's way beyond what our, this fund is set up to do, because we're not going to be repairing the house. So you try to get into those situations where you don't want to really have a judgment call, oh, your downed tree is an emergency, so we're not going to help you, but somebody else's downed tree might be it. It starts to get a little bit subjective, which, you know, I guess you can't remove all subjectivity, but trying to figure it out. And then the other thing, because we want this to be successful and meet the expectations, is just if you could give us some feedback about how aggressively you want us to advertise this, or what would be the appropriate methods? Do we just have it on the webpage, the council members know it? Do we put it in inserts? Do we?
Webpage, city newsletter?
Yeah.
Yes. Do we do an article in the newsletter every six months, you know, sort of what?
I mean, I think it should also follow how we do some of the other programs that we have available.
With the energy audit stuff, I mean, we're actively, we go, we target mail, everybody who's eligible, based on the, you know, tax credit program that the city has.
If we're not proud of it, we shouldn't do it.
Yeah. And I think if we're talking about hazardous trees, and Jan just scared me, how many trees we have. He's walking around the neighborhood, is two months here. So I would say that, you know, if it's, if, once we get this underway, especially if the initial focus or the intent is also on the hazardous tree and the pruning of hazardous limbs, that we want to be out there and let people know about it.
Might be, as I said, an opportunity also to educate the public, citizens and residents about the trees, and, you know, to have them evaluated from time to time. And that's kind of a bit beyond the scope of this particular proposal, but to just make people more aware, and that they can take action. Because as I said, I have concerns as I drive through the city. So that's a bit outside of the scope of this, but might be tying into this.
And that would tie into what we've talked about with the Tree Commission. Before you got here, Jan, and we're just waiting until you settle in a little bit before we hit you with all that. But with the Tree Commission this year, and also with the Committee on the Environment, talking about, as Councilmember Seaman said, more education on the health of the trees, the tree canopy and all of that, so.
I hope we can start it next week in the meeting, that we can kind of, I was going to send some emails, or an email or some links, you know, useful information to help, you know, hopefully educate, so raise awareness.
Great. All right. Well, thank you. It's nice meeting you.
Thank you.
All right, very joined.